Board of Education to Order. Please note, we will be canceling our May 28th Board of Education meeting. So our next regular Board of Education meeting will be June 11th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education Meeting Room. Thank you, everyone. I am going to pass on my chair comments tonight because we have a full agenda. Is there any public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report. All right. Any committee reports? Mr. Dineen is not here, so I will pinch-hit. We'd like to thank the Town Building Committee and all their planning. They really have been working incredibly fastidiously on Ox Ridge. Last night, the RTM approved monies to move forward with researching and development that needs to go into the Ox Ridge Building Schools. So we thank them, the RTM, for that. And as we go through this process, we appreciate all the town and school involvement to build this school correctly, and we look forward to the process. Moving on. Anybody else? Guys are catching me. No one has anything tonight. Give me one second.
But we have a budget. We were pleased that we got to mention that.
Okay. So, our budget passed last night, so thank you again to all of you who didn't. This night was a long meeting. Thank you, Mrs. McHammon. Thank you to everyone who saw us all the way through this budget process, both to the administration for their time in putting it together, the board for all the work and effort they did, our work with the Board of Finance, the RTM Education Committee, the RTM Finance and Budget Committee, and for CDSP for being there through all of those meetings. Collectively, I think we have put together a budget that will serve the children of Darien and respect both the taxpayers and our duty to be fiscally responsible. This budget is a win-win for Darien. And so I thank you all. I thank all the collaboration, both with John Zagrotzky, Jack Davis, and Clara Sutory, Dr. Landon and his team leading us through this, CDSP Chairs Julie Best and Sarah Parent, and quite frankly, the eight other people who sit up here with me and give of their time. Thank you all, and we are in a good position for next year. So, and thank you, Mrs. McHammon, for the reminder. We will move on to presentations and discussions. Oh, approval of minutes. Sorry, guys. Yeah, I know. I had it printed upstairs. It doesn't want to open. It is requested that the Board approve the following minutes. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on April 23rd, 2019. Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous with Mr. Dineen. No, he voted for.
I think he voted for.
Minutes of the regular meeting held April 23rd, 2019. Mr. Burke, so moves, seconded by Mr. Maroni, all in favor. That is unanimous. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on April 29th, 2019. May have a motion. Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Burke, all in favor. That is unanimous. And minutes of the special meeting held on April 29th, 2019, may have a motion. Mr. Brown. I have this one and this one. And Mrs. McHammon, do I see your hand go up? All in favor? We can adjust on that.
There's only three. We're going to just vote for four.
One, two, three, four.
All right. What was the last one?
Minutes of the special meeting held on April 29th. Mr. Burke, move. Mrs. McHammon, second. Now we will move forward with our presentations and discussions. And we will move on to Dr. De Silva, an update from Department Chairpersons and on priorities and outcomes.
Okay. Hi. We're going to have my colleagues here move forward. I'm looking forward to reintroducing our department chairs tonight as they will share their collective work on curriculum and leadership. Over the course of the year, we have had each of our department chairs alongside the elementary curriculum directors share content updates K through 12. The purpose of those presentations were intended to focus on the very specific goals of each content area, as well as their continued work into next school year. Tonight's presentations will focus on leadership practices that cross all content areas. With us this evening is Keith Keeler, Department Chair of Social Studies; Kristin O'Reilly, Department Chair of Special Education at the high school; Christian Dockham, Department Chair of Science; Felicia Bellows, Dr. Felicia Bellows, Department Chair of Mathematics; Frances Janasko, Department Chair of English Language Arts; to the right of Mr. Keeler, Michael Di Stefano, Special Education Department Chair at Middlesex. You remember, Michael joined us in January. And our, oh, Christina Mauricio, Department Chair of World Language, who's just returning from a maternity leave. We welcome her back, sitting alongside Linda Johnson, Director of Math, Science, and Gifted; and Corey Gillette, Humanities, Social Studies, and English. So tonight's agenda is that we plan on giving you an overview of curriculum instruction in Darien, professional development, learning rounds, the curriculum writing and revising process, supervision and evaluation, and modeling and coaching. I'm toggling between two computers, so just be patient a little bit here. So to begin, Darien's curriculum model differs from more traditional curriculum review models in that it is responsive and anchored in the belief that the work of curriculum happens every year and not on a rotation or on a curriculum review cycle of the past, like those five-year review cycles. As such, the curriculum, the responsive curriculum model allows for consistent work, and we review the district yearly plan K through 12 at the start of each school year and throughout the school year consistently. We look at our standards and frameworks. Have there been any changes with State Department of Education standards that we're expected to comply with, or new frameworks? And how does that fit into the revision work that we might be conducting during the school year, or in the summer, or over the process of a number of years? Are there any district initiatives or values that may take priority? So for example, in a short while, I will present on health and wellness. That might be an initiative or value that may take priority over other district initiatives. What budget pieces do we have to comply with? And is there any student learning data or testing that we need to make shifts? In other words, if our student learning data or Sback results indicate a change in scope and sequence, or when we actually teach something, that may result in additional curriculum work. And throughout the school year, most importantly, I think at the end of the school year, we do collect feedback from our teachers and from the students' perspective, and of course our teachers' perspective, on the curriculum. Was a level of rigor appropriate? Did we need to increase the demands? Where are assessments? Do they need to make shifts? And as a result, we may need to make shifts within our curriculum based off of the feedback of students and teachers. So tonight, our curriculum chairs will present on each element that, again, work across content areas. So I'm going to turn it over to Frances, who's going to begin with professional development.
Thank you very much. When we talk about professional development, people naturally think in terms of our district's five full days devoted for that purpose. And while it is true that we are responsible for providing teachers and, for providing teachers with professional learning during those five days, we do have other opportunities to provide our teachers with PD over the course of the year. Having said that, according to my slide, I will start with those five full PD days, which we plan in collaboration with our building administrators. These PD sessions typically target major 6 through 12 department initiatives, and this year's examples include our 6 through 12 English department. We did some work with making grammar instruction more meaningful and more effective for kids. And the 6 through 12 Science Department's work with next-generation science standards. One less obvious form of PD takes shape during PLC sessions. During these sessions, teachers work primarily in grade-level groups where they have opportunities to look at examples of student work, identify areas of student learning growth based on that work, and develop teacher practice goals to achieve those learning objectives. Not only do we guide PLC groups to establish their teacher practice goals, we also guide groups and individuals toward professional resources and best practices to meet those goals. Next is the 6 through 12 department meetings. Along with our monthly department meetings in each building, we also mix in 6 through 12 department meetings throughout the year. When we have these meetings, oftentimes, our focus is on the vertical alignment of curriculum and units and the level of rigor in each. An example of this came during one of the meetings of the 6 through 12 History Department where the focus was on the content and question progressions within the Grade 5, Grade 8, and Grade 11 units on the American Revolution. Next are the teacher one-on-one sessions. So throughout the year, we have many opportunities to conference with individual teachers. We have required practice goal conferences at the beginning, in the middle, and the end of the year. We have conferences before and after formal observations, and we have opportunities for conferences after learning rounds and walkthroughs. Each of these conferences, after, each of these conferences offer opportunities for us to identify teacher needs and support them with professional learning resources. One example of this for me happened earlier this year when debriefing with a teacher after a formal observation. I addressed that teacher's approach to a segment of her lesson by directing her to resources on how to conduct a structured read aloud, which helped her put students in a position to track certain elements during points in the selected reading. And then, in the classroom and staff developers, over the course of the year, we have experts who come from outside the district to lead sessions with our teachers, both inside and outside of the classroom. This year, we have had an expert on co-teaching visit on several occasions to work with our 6 through 12 co-teaching pairs on best practices instructional models. We have also brought in experts to work with our psychologists, our school counselors, and our administrators for training in dialectical behavior therapy. In addition, we continue to invite teachers, college staff developers, to push into our English and Social Studies classrooms where they have modeled instructional techniques for groups of teachers and facilitated debriefing sessions with those teachers afterward. So as we continue tonight to share highlights of our work with our teachers, I encourage you to note how often we are in a position to observe and conference with them, and how each of those occasions are opportunities for us to guide teachers in their professional learning. Next, Keith Keeler will provide you with an overview of learning rounds.
Thank you, Frances. One of the valuable forms of professional development that administrators have are learning rounds. And these learning rounds take place throughout the entire year. These rounds are part of the Evaluation and Observation Plan, as well as the Responsive Curriculum Model. The rounds are ultimately a pair of administrators visiting classes for about five to 10 minutes at a time, and visiting three to four classes typically. After the administrators have made the rounds, they'll follow up with a discussion between the two of them. And it's at that point that we'll be able to calibrate our feedback, to really consider, what did we see in these lessons? What were some of the trends that we noticed? In calibrating our feedback, we're very much connecting to the Evaluation and Observation Plan, making sure that we're giving meaningful feedback to teachers when we observe them. And in looking for trends, what we find feeds into the Responsive Curriculum Model, whether it be the successes of the class or areas for continued growth. When we go into these classes, we typically are doing it with a particular lens in mind. In some cases, we're going to visit four, four classes of a particular grade level, so all the sixth-grade classes, all the 10th-grade classes, for example. And in doing that, we're really looking to get a sense of, what's the student experience like in a particular grade level? What is, what are the content and skill expectations? Are they aligned? In other cases, we'll go and visit a progression of classes, so sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, or nine, 10, 11, and 12, for example. And in looking at those, we're checking to see, are our skill and, are our content and skill expectations gradually increasing with each passing year? Sometimes we'll visit a more random allotment of grade levels, but do it with a particular focus on an aspect of the lesson, a skill, for example. So sometimes we'll look for, what is the level of discourse in the class? How is differentiation being used in the classroom? How engaged are students? I have rounds coming up later this week where we'll be looking at the use of questioning, how they're being used, who's asking them, and that'll be our focus as we visit a variety of classes. These rounds are participated in by all members of the administrative team, principals, assistant principals, assistant superintendent, department chairpersons, program directors, and we do this throughout the entire year. That frequency of classroom visits by multiple people has really made teachers more accustomed to having visitors to their classrooms, made them more comfortable with that. And we've seen the value in this, to the point where we're also expanding this to include teachers in rounds. As I had mentioned, I think previously in my Social Studies presentation a few weeks ago, but extending beyond my department to some of the others as well, we're giving teachers the opportunity to visit classes both at the grade level below and the grade level above where they teach, so they can get a sense of what those expectations are around the, around the students that they're actually teaching. We do all of this in the service of alignment and best practices. We're identifying the areas that we need to continue to grow in, and have a great opportunity to also celebrate the excellent teaching that we see on a regular basis. I'm going to turn things over to Christian Dockham to talk further about curriculum and revision.
Good evening. Excuse me. Thank you, Keith. Curriculum development is a key component of our job as department chairs. Each of our curricula is grounded in our state frameworks and standards and is developed with a focus on creating highly engaging, student-centered experiences for all of our students. For example, as highlighted in an earlier board presentation, Linda Johnson and I have been leading curriculum development teams to create and revise curricular units aligned to the next-generation science standards. Currently, there are curriculum projects being worked on within the math, social studies, English, world language, and as you'll hear later tonight, health. Our district development process ensures consistency across content areas and grade levels. You may also remember prior presentations from program directors and department chairs of a variety of content areas that highlight the curriculum development process, as well as examples of units and learning sequences. An organized set of learning objectives create a solid foundation to build those learning sequences to provide assured learning experiences and aligned assessments across both content and grade-level courses. Consistency in the method of memorializing our curriculum is also critical, as many of our classroom teachers teach for multiple curricula throughout the year, or may shift grade levels on a year-to-year basis. In addition, our special education teachers at all levels utilize our curricula to help support our students, as well as teachers. Speaking of teachers, our teachers are instrumental in the development of curriculum throughout the district. As leaders of our curriculum work, we provide teachers with the necessary skills and resources to develop our high-quality curriculum units. Guiding teachers in unpacking the standards, development of essential questions, and creation of learning objectives is an opportunity to build capacity among our teachers, and is a great example of our professional development opportunities available to our teachers. As our year starts to wrap up, our curriculum revision work is ready to take off. Once a unit has been developed and implemented in the classroom, we collect teacher feedback and share with our curriculum teams. As Keith mentioned earlier, classroom visits, such as learning rounds, informal and formal observations, provide us with additional opportunities to observe our curricular units in action. This feedback is utilized to highlight the strengths and weaknesses in our units, which are then revised to ensure that they meet the needs of all students, and all students are taken into consideration. Working with our elementary program directors to streamline our curriculum development and revision process has been an invaluable collaboration for us as department chairs. Opportunity to work with the program directors ensures a vertical alignment of expectations and appropriate learning progressions K-12. For example, you previously heard about Keith working with Corey Gillette and fifth-grade team to develop a social studies curriculum that aligns the fifth-grade units in the American Revolution to subsequent eighth and 11th grade units, to build in both skills and academic rigor. You may also remember from previous presentations, department chairs develop and create curriculum warped, our curriculum websites for both teachers and parents. Memorializing this work in a central location has made it easier for teachers to access draft curricular units and collaborate with each other digitally. Our parent site provides curriculum overviews for each grade and content area, as well as critical information on our state standards, course sequences, bless you, placement processes for each department. As our work continues, new revision and draft units are added to the website as they are completed. As you can see, our responsive curriculum model is focused on creating student-centered curricula that provides age and developmentally appropriate learning experiences from our kindergartners to our 12th graders. While we are very proud of our work so far, we believe that we can continually improve by building on our strengths and identifying where our weaknesses may lie. I'm happy to introduce Dr. Felicia Bellows, who will be further discussing our supervision and evaluation experiences as department chairs.
Thank you, Mr. Dockham. One of our primary roles as department chairs includes the supervision and evaluation of the teachers within our department. As part of the teacher evaluation model, teachers have the opportunity to receive professional development that is content-specific during both the pre- and post-observation phase. For example, during the pre-observation conference, an analysis of the lesson is discussed, so that teachers have the opportunity to receive professional development prior to the implementation of the lesson. Likewise, if there are components within a lesson that are missing, the post-observation conference is an opportunity for teachers to reflect, discuss strategies that would be recommended, to improve upon current classroom practices. What is especially helpful in our current roles is the ability to provide feedback to our teachers that is specific to our disciplines. Last year, and also earlier in the presentation with Mr. Keeler, we spoke about the learning rounds and/or walkthroughs that were taking place across our district. As part of the process, these learning rounds and walkthroughs have not only increased the number of informal observations for our teachers, but also provide frequent and consistent feedback regarding their daily practices. Teachers have the opportunity to receive feedback and coaching regarding their teacher practice goals and student learning objectives as a result of the increase in these informal observations. And from a supervisory standpoint, the informal walkthroughs have ensured that there's consistent alignment between the courses, and also that the students are engaging in engaging lessons, interactive lessons, and lessons that are student-centered. It also allows us to hold our teachers accountable for the standards that we expect in the classroom on a daily basis. One really unique and new component to our work this year also has involved co-observations in the classroom. This year, our department chairs teamed up with other school administrators to observe teachers formally with a common focus. And there have been many positive outcomes from having two administrators observe a classroom simultaneously. This includes productive discussions and feedback from both administrators about the same lesson that was observed, and it helps teachers have a calibrated perspective from two observers regarding their instructional practices and interactions with their students. As department chairs, we're continually looking to provide opportunities for teachers to grow and expand their practices in the classroom. The supervision and evaluation component of our positions, especially since it is content-specific, has helped to make this more effective. I will now turn it over to Kristin O'Reilly, who will speak to you about the modeling and coaching part that is taking place in our classrooms.
Thanks, Felicia. Modeling and coaching serves as another tool or strategy that we as department chairs use to help develop our teachers. We use this model for instructional purposes, often in real time during learning rounds or informal observations. Coaching and modeling could be used for preemptive purposes in the moment or a specific purpose, or it could be used to help problem-solve. For example, a teacher may require coaching and modeling to serve as another set of eyes on a classroom challenge, a neutral third party to share another perspective and provide real-time strategies. Coaching and modeling may also help support our teachers in their work outside of the instructional roles and responsibilities that they may have. We may be helping teachers problem-solve in advance of a phone call or a meeting to gain perspective in approaching the conversation. We also use coaching and modeling when conferencing with a teacher on a particular aspect of lesson planning or instructional delivery. Teachers will often seek their respective department chairs and oftentimes cross-curricular department chairs for guidance, modeling, and coaching, as they have found it to be beneficial and a collaborative process. As an example, earlier this school year, a student who received special education services was struggling in classes across multiple departments and subject areas. This modeling allowed us to brainstorm around the needs of the student, which differed based on the content of the classes, and resources were made available to the teachers in supporting that student. We also identify teachers within our departments and across departments that may serve as model examples for particular aspects of instruction. Coordinating opportunities for teachers to coach and model for each other is another way that we utilize this strategy. And in looking forward to next year without scheduled teaching time, we will have the additional time to get into classrooms for cycles of modeling and coaching. And it is all of these aspects within the scope of our goals as department chairs that help us support and develop our teachers and ultimately best support our students. And now we will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Board, questions and comments? Mrs. McHammon. I almost said McHammon.
Thank you. Given that this model is still relatively new to the district, it's really helpful to understand your, the responsive curricular philosophy, particularly as it's, you know, we do want to be educationally at the forefront of what's happening. So this is exciting to hear about. It's also helpful to understand what your process really looks like, to see the structure that you put behind it. So, so thank you for all of that. Going forward, as we continue to talk, it's challenging, as you guys know better than we do in many ways, for us to talk about the right level of administrative support for any given district. So what you're doing sounds really exciting. So from, as we go forward, can you help us understand how you know that you're successful? How you know that you've achieved vertical and horizontal alignment? How you know that there are full and proper implementation of large curricular initiatives or smaller curricular tweaks? How you have, how you've been able to capture the fact that you really have been able to improve teacher performance? I greatly appreciate the example because it makes it concrete for us. But I'd like to see that at the programmatic level, because I'd like to be able to get up and say, we are so excited for this level of management structure. We know we needed it in this district. We needed to look at all those places, and here's what we've been able to accomplish, and here's how we can prove it.
So did you want to answer to those questions? Because we'll start with, I think, I'll try to summarize some of those. I'll try to summarize some of those. I think what tonight provided is a really sharp example of how we're able to answer these, some of those questions that you asked. The ability to have the elementary directors alongside the secondary directors has opened our eyes to many things. I remember our first year, which is at the beginning of last year, when our elementary director was working alongside Keith, actually Cory and Keith, and at one point myself in a, in a separate visit, we noticed how one, one particular content, one particular unit was not necessarily evolving in the level of rigor that we would anticipate would happen over the course of elementary, middle, and high. And so that allowed for a bigger discussion and some revision at all three levels. In addition to that, I think what all of them shared tonight, whether it's the actual writing of the curriculum, whether it's the visits into classrooms, whether it's the intervisitation among cross-content areas, it gives us a whole other range of perspective that we didn't have three years ago. And now, at the end of the day, how does that impact students? Because that's ultimately our goal. We talked a lot about what we as, as administrators do and what we do to support our teachers, but at the end of the day, we're in support of children. I think that you can measure that, whether that's on assessments, whether that's feedback from students, whether that's feedback from teachers on how our students are performing, on whether that's quantitative measures or qualitative measures, how the, the practices that they're employing, imploring have evolved. Are we seeing teachers questioned differently? Are we seeing the instruction be more focused on students as opposed to the adults doing the heavy lifting? Their visits into classrooms help them measure that. And so some of those things you can't measure by checks, but I think that most certainly, I know that most certainly through the work that's happening each and every day, the number of visits, the number of time that they're in classrooms can certainly help that.
Can I just follow up? So, one of the things we talked about last year was, you know, a lot of us were excited about the common assessments, particularly at the high school. Perhaps to Mrs. McCannan's point, now that you've had it sort of a year and it's still in its infantile stages, have you seen anything since? I mean, you haven't, we haven't done exams yet, but even in the winter, those set of exams, perhaps, there is some data to say, common exams, if kids are doing well on them, that speaks to the fact that the curriculum is getting aligned, kids are having a shared experience, that kind of stuff, not for now, but maybe in the fall, you know, we can look at some of that data as well to show that it's working. I mean, I, I'm so thrilled we invested in this, these positions because what you're doing is amazing, and I'm very grateful.
Mrs. Ritchie.
An important part of this is the, the teachers and the observations and the feedback that you give them. So, I'm curious, has it been a positive response for the most part? And do you see them implementing, implementing the feedback that you've given them consistently?
There are two parts to that, but one of the, the new components to what we did this year was co-observe. So, for example, Kristin O'Reilly and I both went into math classrooms to look at the co-teaching models and to make suggestions and then come back and see changes being made. And that's, that's even, even when it's not a formal observation necessarily, but informally and then formally, you see the changes take place because that's where the professional development is taking place. And that's new. That's something that really is not just a write-up for a one snapshot in time, but something that's happening over the course of the year.
Mr. Brown.
One logistical question and a sort of follow-up to Susie, but the logistical question, you're doing a lot of these meetings with these teachers. I'm curious as to, on average, you know, how much prep time do you have to take before you have your sit-down? And then, you know, how much time do you have in your sit-down? On average, I'm sure that it varies depending on how well the teacher is doing. And then to Susie, you know, in your cover memo, you talk about the, the strengths and the challenges of our curriculum and units of study. Having gone to the process to this point, what do you still see as some of the challenges to our, you know, curriculum and how this group is addressing?
I think, over time, the strength is that we have really worked very hard to ensure that we have vertical alignment. This work takes time. And so, as you heard from science and social studies, we've had standards come to us and we've made revisions as a result, but with those revisions, there's the challenges of providing teachers with professional development, ensuring that the implementation takes place, coming back to these units and making additional revisions, whether that's based off of teacher feedback and/or student data. So, I, I think that overall, the work that my colleagues have done over the past year and a half with their elementary partners has been so incredibly significant. You can feel the difference in classrooms, most specifically myself, who don't live in the schools. You go into classrooms, teachers, students are more comfortable with having adults in their rooms, asking them questions, talking about their learning than they ever have been in the past. But it's a, it's a work in progress, and some of this work takes more time than, for those of us that wanted it done yesterday. So, I would say that that's a challenge.
Just a thumbnail of the, the prep time and the time that you're spending, because I know there's, we get asked about, okay, if they're, they're not teaching and they're doing all this work, I mean, just to give a better idea of the block of time, because I know it's considerable, but to say it publicly.
Are you talking about the time and planning for curriculum work? Or are you talking about?
No, for the meetings.
It does take a lot of time.
Right, so it's X amount of minutes to prepare, and then you're in the meeting. How long is that taking up? Is either a percentage of day or just a raw, like hour?
So, if it's informal, it can take less time because then we can pop in and then provide feedback right away, and that's probably the most effective. The formal observations take a lot of time because you do have that pre-meeting, the post-meeting, and the formal, which is 48 minutes of observing, so that takes a little bit longer. The informals are powerful, and that's what we've increased this year, and that's what's been, you know, that's where the changes have taken place, because we're popping in, doing rounds, and then we can provide that quick feedback that's effective. It's on the spot, right there and then, so.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Just following up really quickly, there was a point made earlier about grammar and making grammar more meaningful?
You got that.
If we could get a, get a little, what meaningful means and how you put that in place and measure, just, you know, sort of an example of this in practice, it was said, if you give a little more color, that'd be appreciated.
Sure.
Can I sign up?
Well. We did a student survey last June at the high school, and I'm not saying, it was, it was a six-to-twelve initiative, but one of the takeaways from the student feedback was they wanted to have more grammar instruction in the classroom. So, we made it a, sort of a thematic emphasis for the big PD days and our departmental six-to-twelve meetings. We brought in three experts who have either published in grammar or there's a very little-known offshoot of NCTE that is the Assembly of Teachers of English Grammar, and we brought in a former president of that organization to work with our teachers. And what we, I, to be honest with you, I thought the process was going to culminate in a scope and sequence that was going to happen this year, but it was just, it just kind of spilled over into what's going to happen next August. So, by that point, we're going to have a discussion about our scope and sequence for each of the six-to-twelve grade levels, what we're going to emphasize for grammatical concepts there, and we're going to try to come up with a, a common language for terms because there are some concepts that have more than one. So, that's like a highlight of the work we've done.
And that would, that wouldn't be just in English, that would be across other subjects as well, say, for instance, writing projects in social studies that would be emphasized, or it would only be specific to the English program?
I would say that it's going to be, for now, specific to the English department. I'd like to see if we can get some traction and then if, you know, with any luck, we can have it spill into the other departments.
Thank you.
Mrs. McAmber.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I think the students of Darien are fortunate to have this program in place. But in your presentation, you know, when I look at it in its entirety, it sounds like you're doing a lot. So, but, um, could you clarify for me a little, how do you attack all these pieces? You are doing pre-formal, informal, you are doing curriculum. How do you structure your week? Are you structured by months? Could you give me sense as to how you achieve all of this in a systematic way and feel you're comfortable covering it all?
I like to think of the year as a series of take-offs and landings, and, and so like take-offs are very high-energy, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of needs, but in, you know, an airplane flight, there is some time where the pilot can sort of sit back and, and make sure everything's going, running smoothly. And, and so there are a lot of times throughout the year where, you know, there's, there is time to focus on what's going on in the classroom, to focus on those individualized conversations with teachers, to focus on making informal observations and talking with students. But there are also some times that are really high-paced where you're finishing up a series of observations, or you're, you're making those mid-year meetings with teachers. And, and so it, it does sort of ebb and flow throughout the year, but there's times when there isn't sort of formal expectations, we have those opportunities and utilize that time to, to do some more of the informal observations and the informal conversations with teachers.
Okay. Thank you. And just in your presentation, could you clarify for everybody what you mean by formal versus informal, because that vernacular, how does that translate, what you're actually doing?
Certainly. So, you know, I, I would say a formal observation is, is a formal part of the teacher evaluation plan, where we are going in and providing a formal document with our feedback and with our review of the lesson as part of that observation plan that the district has adopted. Informal can be part of that observation plan, but oftentimes it's, you know, walking in just to, to check on alignment across, as Keith mentioned, three sixth-grade classes or four sixth-grade classes to, to see where they are in the curriculum and just to give some informal feedback, say, you know, let's try to speed up a little bit here so we get up to speed with the other classes, as a simple example. So, those would be, those wouldn't be formally documented as, as a formal observation or as part of the evaluation and supervision plan.
And then in general, do you find across all your disciplines that you're sort of working in the same air, tackling the same areas at the same time, or are you all just sort of your own, aside from working together? Where someone's doing, you're across the sixth grade, someone else is doing six, seven, eight, someone's doing curriculum, is there continuity to how you work or is it just your needs?
I'll probably answer that. There's no continuity. Each department has their priorities. For the most part, throughout the school year, there's always curriculum being written or revised, where revisited or adapted by every department. But we may have a team of teachers from science working in the month of October in the afternoon on a particular unit based off of when that unit's going to be taught. In other words, if we had to revise a spring unit, we don't necessarily have to start that this spring. We can, if we're already working on it, we can start it in the fall and have it ready for the spring. That may be different for Keith. The process of supervision and evaluation, we define that globally, informal, formal, learning rounds, all of those pieces, and sometimes that even comes as a result of PD. That happens and is a priority of each of their days. And so we expect that our department chairs are in classrooms a significant amount of their day. Write-ups in the evaluation process of, you know, creating those, that's, you know, oftentimes in the evenings or early mornings, however, they want to adjust their life. But when it comes to the, the day-to-day work, the priority is really to be in classrooms, servicing teachers, whether it's modeling, coaching, giving them feedback, but that is a priority.
Great, thank you. Mr. Jenney.
Could you just go back? You said, you were talking about, to Chris's point, formal and informal, someone had mentioned pop-ins, but then you said they're not necessarily. Thanks, Dennis. They're not necessarily documented or part of the formal overall evaluation? And when you pop in or it's informal, how much time are you in that class?
I'd say anywhere in between eight to 12, 15 minutes, depending on what is going on in, in the classroom. It's really to, to get a sense of what the students are, are doing, or as Keith mentioned, if there's a particular focus that, that we're looking at with other administrators, whether it be questioning or whether it be the, the type of work that students are doing within the classroom. And, and so our feedback would be focused on that particular aspect that, that we're looking at in that, in that short period of time.
But there's, you, you mentioned students a couple of times. There's no focus on what the teacher is doing in the classroom?
Those, those were just two examples of what we might be looking at during one of those informal or, or pop-in visits.
Can I just add that I think on the informal evaluations as well as formal, our department chair will walk around the room as well as, you know, observe what the teacher's doing, and oftentimes they will question individual students and say, "What's the lesson about? What are you learning today?" So, they get a good handle on how well the, the teacher is reaching the students with a particular lesson being taught. And I would like to add also that in, in the informal observation, if something good is going on, the chairs will write that in an email or note to the teacher, and if there is advice to be given to improve instruction, they will also follow up with that. In addition, on the formal observations, for non-tenure teachers, we have very, very strict guidelines. I think Marge can talk to those. And for tenure teachers, we also do, and, and there, we have a whole different process, which is very, very formal. And, and Marge, maybe you want to relate to that.
I mean, I think that the, I think the department chairs have done a fine job of explaining the formal, which is very structured, but really, anytime they walk in, they have the potential to put it in ProTrax or follow up with an email or talk to another administrator. So, it's all really part of the process, even though it's not necessarily in a formal way.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Brown.
With the evaluations, the informal and formal, are they unannounced? Are they scheduled? So, are they aware that you're coming into the classroom? And then I'm just curious if you're finding a common weakness during the process, or are they just basically across the board, different types of weaknesses?
The, the formal observations are, are scheduled. So, the pre-observation, where you meet with the teacher, discuss what the plan is of what they're going to be teaching, observe the lesson for the full period, and then meet after and discuss what could have been changed, what was great about it. The informal can be planned, and it can be a pop-in, it can be the whole period, it can be 10 minutes, and it can be written up or it cannot be written up. So, it's used in a multiple variety of ways for that. And your second question?
Are you finding a common weakness among, in your observations, or are you finding that they're just, depending on the teacher, depending on the subject matter?
I think that varies by the level at which the teachers are at, depending on their years of experience, their years of growth as a teacher, and in, within the departments too. As a school, schools, we have common focus, like we want to see student-centered learning, we want to see productive struggle in the classroom, we want to see certain things, and that's when we go in with other administrators with a common focus to see what's the student-talk to teacher-talk ratio or, you know, things like that. But I think as far as teachers go, everybody's at a different level depending on their years of experience.
And the administrators, are they one of the department heads, or can they be a different administrator?
It can be both. It can be a department head with a principal, assistant principal with a special ed.
It's, it's all, Ms. Ritchie. We have it on a very particular schedule, so it would be expected that the department chairs would be doing observations with me. It would be expected that they would be doing observations with the special education department chairs. They would be doing observations with the program, the elementary program directors, the special education program directors, the assistant superintendents, the principals, and the assistant principals. There's a schedule that we have at the start of the year. The invites start going out, and your schedule is full within a day.
Mr. Brown.
Sorry, just quickly, I was trying to think about the process. We have a great system that seems to roll forward to look at what teachers are doing and be able to improve that. Is there anything, say, for the student side, roll back, if we miss something, like if we, you're observing a class and somebody just kind of didn't get the lesson right or something was skipped or wasn't quite there? Is there a process to get them up to speed where they need to be in terms of lesson objectives and curriculum for the student side as well?
Very much so. The administrator, whichever administrators in observing a class, if they notice a student or several students perhaps didn't obtain the, didn't attain the objective, part of the discussion with the teacher would be just that, is how do you support that student or students in accessing, and what would tomorrow's instruction look like for those students that perhaps just didn't get it, they needed additional time, they needed additional scaffolding? So, that's part of the process and the feedback that teachers would be provided.
So, there would be that catch-up sort of feedback as well, if necessary?
For sure, for those students, absolutely.
Can I piggyback off of that question for a minute? I imagine one of the greatest challenges, you have a lot of teachers, they could be good, you want common learning going on, but everyone has their own personalities. How, how has that struggle been letting teachers maintain their kind of individual nature and what makes them a great teacher, and yet trying to get everyone on a common page of what we're teaching? How's that going?
Autonomy in a box is that we do provide the structure. We provide the structure. We have a curriculum that we expect our teachers to teach. They can choose to be as creative as they like, so long as those objectives are maintained. We also do want to be sure, though, that our students have assured experience. We also do want to be sure, though, that our students have assured experiences, that they're not just part of a mini lecture or a lecture every single class, that there's opportunities that are varied and differed. So that is part of the process in terms of the curriculum writing. You'll see in a, um, hopefully in a few moments, as we talk about health and wellness and the depth that comes with the learning sequence, that it provides different types of accessibility to students, and it's not always the same. But we do want our teachers to come, they have, it's the art and science of teaching, and we want to be sure that we allow for that. Um, but we do have a curriculum, and we do have a scope and sequence, and we do expect that our teachers certainly follow that, but bring their own flavor to the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments?
Um, going back to the students, you've mentioned where there might be the opportunity where you'd ask a student, what is the reason for this lesson or feedback, but is there any more formalized or broader opportunity for students to give feedback on a unit, on the year, on a lesson? How does that work? How are you hearing the student's voice, and how is that being documented?
I don't know about a given unit, but we do have an expectation that our teachers are going to give their students an opportunity to evaluate the course at the end of the year. So, um, I, we don't have, maybe it's not systematic, it's by department, but that expectation is there. And our teachers do make that available to students at the end of the year.
Also just collecting feedback through exit slips and, um, you know, on, on a more kind of day-to-day, lesson-to-lesson frequency, just to really gather, you know, are students understanding what the objective was for the lesson? And, and do they have a firm grasp on, on what that instruction was supposed to be? And are they leaving the class that day, um, having met kind of that objective? So that's also really helpful data on a more day-to-day, week-to-week basis.
But I'm sorry, to clarify, does it occur across all the, all the disciplines, or no? I'm sorry, just to clarify.
No, I think what Frances was saying is it is by department that they evaluate the courses. I'm not sure if that's consistent. Uh, to Kristen's point, and you'll see in a few moments, we do incorporate exit slips, which are students' opportunities to give feedback, whether it's on the lesson and what they learned from that lesson. You'll see it in health and wellness, and that's embedded in many of the, uh, curriculum units across our content areas. But there isn't necessarily a very strategic or very specific way that's common.
Is there a way you could, is that something you might be interested in pursuing to have a common, however you want to do it, but a common, whether it's year end or?
To collect feedback on the course. We can discuss that.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, the one thing that I'm personally missing is what are the next steps? What is, what does the future look like in, in the curriculum supervisor role? What is, and maybe even short-term, long-term, what is the next two years, and then what is, what does five to 10 years look like? Cause I assume the role has to change because with the, with the integrated vertical and horizontal integration, hopefully that will be done in the next year, and then it will become a different role, I would imagine. And what does that look like?
So that, that's the, um, the challenge with curriculum. It is, it's never-ending. And so there is no doubt, and I think your elementary curriculum directors who have been experiencing this for a little bit longer than our secondary folks can tell you, is that the moment you think your curriculum is ready to go, something changes, whether that's our students that change or evolve, a new standard, a new framework, our testing data. That's how we started this presentation. The work is always evolving. It's getting better. We're getting smarter. Um, there's different resources, things that evolve, um, in different ways. So I'm not sure necessarily that this role or the, what you heard today will evolve. There'll be better practices, I'm sure, that we will learn that make us more effective as curriculum folks in our schools, whether that's calibrating in different ways. Um, but I'm not necessarily sure that this work, I know that this work will never be done, that it's just, it's just different work and it evolves. And as soon as that unit is done in science, I already know that we're back at it. We've just gotten smarter. And we have different resources that help kids in different ways. We learn about children and how they've developed differently over time. You know, what technology is today is different than yesterday. And so as a result, we're changing and refining our units. I actually think that that's the greatest strength of Darien right now, is that we're not on this five-year continuum, that, okay, it's five years, now it's time to talk about social studies because we haven't spoken about it for four years. I anticipate that next year you're going to want to hear what's happening in social studies again, and what's happening in science and math, because it will be different than it is this year.
Can I?
If I can look at my crystal ball, um, I think what we will find among department chairs as we move forward in the years is, um, they'll be working with their departments more on a Socratic approach to teaching, where they have greater student involvement, um, in the teaching. Years ago, you used to see all lecture. It's go, it's, it's moving further and further into, um, engagement of, of students. So I think they'll be overseeing that. Um, I think, um, they will probably be more involved in coaching and modeling than they've had the opportunity to do so in the past. Um, they will be working pretty closely with our new instructional technology person on making use of technology with the kids so that, um, the kids have more of an opportunity to work independently, creatively, um, and, um, students questioning more, researching more. Um, so I think there'll be facilitators, incredible facilitators, um, in, in working with kids. So, I mean, Susie's right. I mean, who knows what the future holds? But certainly, the, the role of the department chairs is going to change significantly, I think, in giving kids greater power in terms of being responsible for their own learning, becoming critical thinkers, creative thinkers, independent problem solvers. And you can begin to see much of that, even if you look at, um, the middle school program, for example. Um, you know, where they have their, their projects that, that they're working on from six, seven, and eight. You'll follow that through, then products at the high school. So greater engagement of students in their own learning and becoming true independent thinkers and independent learners. And I, I believe that now that the department chair is going to be freed up full-time to supervise, evaluate, model, coach, um, they will be actively involved in, in making that happen in all of our, all of our, all of our departments, all of our classes.
That's a great place to wrap up. So, um, thank you.
I'll follow my other questions. Thank you. The presentation was excellent. Thank you for your work.
We will move on to an update on the health and wellness curriculum. Dr. De Silva.
Okay, so I'm going to be again navigating two different pieces of technology here, which requires a different part of my brain. So I'm going to do the best that I can. Uh, good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education for its continued support of health and wellness for the students of Darien. It's clear that this has been a priority for our community and certainly for this board. I'm excited to share this work tonight, which has really been heavily supported by experts in the field, our administrators, teachers across all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. Joining me tonight is Callie Seagan and Ally Pelcher, our health education teachers at middle school. Both Callie and Ally, hired at the same time, to just confuse us, are actually the only, health-only teachers we have here in Darien. I thought I saw another health teacher here tonight, Mr. De Mayo. Um, but they've really been instrumental in the work of creating this curriculum from the elementary, middle, and high, and ensuring that we had the vertical alignment between each level. Like I said, I'm going to be navigating two here. So tonight's agenda is that we will address the following topics. Our goals around health and wellness, those that we developed just about a year and a half ago. The approach that we took around health and wellness. We plan to provide you an update on our skills-based health education curriculum, an update on social-emotional learning, and our next steps. As we approach the topic of health and wellness, it's important to note that health and wellness is complex and has many different layers. And in the field, you'll hear it talked about in lots of different ways. People will talk about social skills. They'll talk about social-emotional learning, executive functioning, health education, physical education, mental health. And so the best way, or the best metaphor that I can use to describe it is that health and wellness is the canopy of the umbrella, and there are many different ribs that are part of the umbrella, whether that's social-emotional learning, uh, skills-based health education curriculum that you'll hear about tonight, developmental guidance, physical education, et cetera. Our health and wellness goals that we developed this past year was that we really wanted to develop an innovative and comprehensive, skills-based health education curriculum. This is different than a traditional, the traditional health curriculum of the past, in this district and many others. We wanted to be sure that we were creating opportunities for social-emotional learning to occur in all aspects of the school curriculum and school communities, and not just a separate thing. So we don't sit down and say, this is social-emotional learning time. It's part of the fabric of the school. And hopefully this will become clearer as we go along tonight. And the, the last goal that we set out to, uh, work on is that we really wanted to be sure that our teacher toolkit was available for, uh, for them to meet the very specific needs of all students and all components of health, whether that's social, emotional, mental, or physical health. It's important to note that the following assumptions as we approach how we, uh, talk about health and wellness, that we believe it is the responsibility of all adults in and out of the school. So it's not just our health education teachers or our school psychologists, our classroom teachers. It's really everybody's responsibility. And as you begin to think about those ribs as part of the umbrella's canopy, you'll notice that there's a lot of different pieces and a lot of moving parts. Um, from my perspective, this was, this is or has been one of the greater challenges in developing this curriculum, quote-unquote, because there are many different layers, and we wanted to be sure that we were as thoughtful as possible in the integration. We realize that students enter with very unique needs related to both learning and health, whether that's physical, social, um, or emotional. And that there are varied approaches to teaching, um, and models to teaching, uh, health and wellness. And we really wanted to stay focused on the idea of collaboration and integration. And I think over the, the course of this presentation, you'll understand why we did that. And we wanted to be sure that we were proactive and authentic. Across our units and our lessons, you'll notice that they are student-centered and participatory as much as possible. Um, they're quite innovative, I think, and creative, and it's, you'll, I think you'll be excited. Okay, so let's to begin with, um, our skills-based health education curriculum. And so what we wanted to do was across our classrooms, pre-K to 12, we started off with developing a scope and sequence for the teaching of health education. And the most important thing for you to see across the next two slides is that we really extended the scope of our work well beyond the national health standards. It is far more comprehensive. So anchored in our scope and sequence are the national health education standards, the Connecticut state standards, the categories of health, which actually came from a knowledge summary that we took at the start of this work from parents, teachers, actually students, the performance indicators, which is what students are expected to know, understand, and be able to do, and the functional knowledge, which we'll talk about further in just a minute. In addition to that, the scope and sequence is anchored in social-emotional learning skills, what we also call competencies. So in health education, we have standards. In social-emotional learning, quote-unquote, we have competencies. So they're slightly different, but you'll see that there's similarities. The Connecticut State Department of Education does provide us and expect us, um, to ha, include state statutory requirements around health safety, alcohol, nicotine, opioids, and AIDS, as well as them providing us guidelines on, um, sexual health education. In, um, health education, there are actually, oops, there were. There are eight standards. These are actually the shortened version. And as I described earlier, our approach, um, to collaboration is essential, and I think you'll see why as we begin to talk about the castle competencies later in the presentation, as well as other areas such as developmental guidance. So all of them have, um, many of the same goals, resulting in our ability to really be thoughtful about the integration. So this is a screenshot. It does not encompass, um, the entire scope and sequence, but it's just to give you a snapshot of a scope and sequence for pre-K-K. So we have, uh, eight standards, eight national health standards. And so those are clustered among grade levels. So across pre-K to grade two, naturally, we don't have all of our students in pre-K that move on to kindergarten, but they're clustered. So across those grade levels, we will teach the eight standards at one point or another. So the standard, which you saw earlier, a shortened version, which is called Core Concepts. The standard's up on top. In this particular case, it's that students will comprehend concepts related to health promotion and disease prevention to enhance health. Along the left-hand side, this is just one essential question. There may be several. Um, what do I need to know and do to keep myself healthy? The performance indicators are what we expect students to be able to demonstrate, and then the functional knowledge. So in the memo that you received from me, um, you also received an article that defined the difference between skills-based health education curriculum versus a more traditional model. So the research is pretty clear that knowledge alone does not actually change behavior. Yet we also know that we need some knowledge to provide meaning to the behavior that we hope to seek. So what we need is that functional knowledge, which is in the right-hand column, and that's relevant, usable, and applicable. So it's the need-to-know information about a health topic. And the best way to describe it is really the content that provides the context to that standard. Highlighted in yellow, this is, um, again, it's just a, a small screenshot. Highlighted in yellow is just really more for our use. This is a draft document. But these are actually the social-emotional competencies, which you'll, um, see later. So you can see explaining feelings, identify how to breathe and, um, how to breathe to calm themselves, and how to be a good friend. In purple, um, by looks of those, those are actually the Connecticut state guidelines on sexual, uh, on sexual education. And so you'll see those outlined in purple. And then throughout the scope and sequence, we make every effort to look at the competencies and look at the regulations and integrate them in, in meaningful ways. The next example is grade eight. Uh, so similarly, in grade seven and eight, we have eight, those same eight standards, and there's clusters. We teach four of them in grade seven and four of them into grade eight. It's set up very similarly. The standard is up on top, essential questions, your performance indicators, and your functional knowledge. Highlighted here in green looks like our, um, state, uh, State Department of Education guidelines, or expectations, requirements, actually, on the teaching of, um, tobacco and drugs. And then an example here in grade nine, uh, we have standard seven, our essential questions, performance indicators, and again, the functional knowledge. So you can see how the functional knowledge is changing, and the level of rigor is changing. And so here, uh, the standard is that students will demonstrate the ability to practice health-enhancing behaviors to avoid and reduce health risks. Along the side is how can I manage stressors and reduce health risks and injury in all areas of my life so I can effectively support my health now and in the future? And the functional knowledge would be for students, in this particular case, some of the social-emotional ones, is to create a personalized plan of coping strategies. Um, you could see here, we want kids to be able to include dealing with success and failures and challenges in sport, academics, socially relationships, and societal norms. So with the creation of the scope and sequence, we also developed units of study. And in a moment, I'm going to show you an example of a unit of study for grade nine. We have not completed the units of study, and I believe you'll understand why. It is a significant amount of, um, time and energy because we are also creating a learning sequence along with assessments, which I'll show you in a minute. Um, however, at the start of next school year, our teachers at the secondary level will begin the school year with, um, two units complete for each grade level. These units, um, do reflect opportunities to collaborate and integrate as much as possible, whether that's developmental guidance, PE, which we'll talk about in a moment, a morning meeting, advisory, and flex. These units also reflect the new graduation requirements that Principal Dunn spoke about, um, earlier this month or last month, where we will be teaching one quarter or 45 sessions. We're not exactly- we're not exactly sure how that's going to work out in the schedule, of health education by grade level. So, that is a difference. Students will now be with their developmental and age-level appropriate peers in discussing, or in, as part of their health education program. So, this unit of study is the standard two, it's analyzing influences. Each of our teachers will be provided with a unit overview. You can see the essential questions. Again, here are the categories of health, this came from our knowledge summary of, from parents, teachers, the community, students. The functional knowledge is that need-to-know information that I showed you examples of earlier. Again, the highlights are really just for our benefit, to see how the different social emotional skills and standards are embedded. You can see topics such as screen times, influence on your personal wellness, whether that's speech, sleep quality, emotional management focus, other topics that students will be exploring. Along the right side are key terms of vocabulary that students would need to know through this experience of this unit. As I scroll down, we've developed conceptual understandings, what students should understand, and then evidence of understanding by the end of the unit, what we're expecting students to know, understand, and be able to do. Then we do have assessment, so this was part of the conversation that we had earlier tonight, is how do we know whether or not students are learning? We've developed pre-assessments. The reason that this is important is students do come into these units with different misconceptions or misinterpretations about particular concepts. Even though this is a skills-based health curriculum model, it's important for us to understand what they know and what they've learned. These are also new units, remember, they don't have this curriculum from the past, and so we anticipate that this unit in particular, they may or may not have experienced the prior unit in grade eight with such depth, because it's a draft unit, that they can come into this unit with enough skills to be successful. So, the pre-assessments are important. Formative assessments, as you can see, we have exit slips built in, these are just hyperlinks right to the document that our teachers will have. These exit slips allow us to get an understanding of what students did learn in each of the lesson, and perhaps what questions they may still have, or misconceptions, misinterpretations, especially in this content that they may have, that teachers may need to adjust their teaching. Across every unit, pre-K to 12, again, those are clustered standards, we do have a benchmark assessment, which is our final assessment to ensure that our students learned what we taught them. And in this particular case, with analyzing influences, students are expected to investigate how internal and external influences inform personal health-related behaviors, and create a personalized plan to mitigate those health-hinderings influences. Across the learning sequence, this is literally lesson by lesson that we've created for our teachers, they're hyperlinked here, with all of the resources that they will need in order to be able to teach this lesson. So, going into, for our grade nine teachers of health education, going into the summer, they will have this comprehensive unit in draft form, they'll collect feedback, ready for them, with all of the materials that they will need, ready for them to go and be able to teach at the start of the school year. In addition to that, we've also provided our staff with resources that our students can use that have already been embedded. In addition to HomeLink resources, and we will also have for parents, a similar overview that you noticed we had for our teachers, so that when our students walk into a unit, our parents will have an understanding of what the unit overview is like. As you might imagine, some of the topics could, the functional knowledge could be sensitive, and we want to be sure that parents have an understanding of what's being addressed in our units of study. In terms of next steps, as I shared earlier, we will continue the unit development and learning sequence for the fall. We have prioritized the secondary level, as they are obviously teaching courses, and certainly at the second, at the high school as well. In addition to that, we've prioritized the human growth and development puberty as part of the elementary program. We currently have a guest folks, guest presenters that come and teach that to our students. The Connecticut Sexual Assault Group and Kids in Crisis have done that work in support of our students for many years, mainly due to the fact that we did not have a curriculum. So, this has evolved now, and so our teachers will be taking this on. And so, what will have to happen, in particular for our elementary teachers, is we will need to provide them with professional development. The professional development will look different for the elementary, we'll need outside experts coming in, supporting our elementary folks with content, for example, puberty education, and helping them also understand how health education looks different in a school setting than it does outside of the school. For our secondary teachers, we're focusing less on content, but rather making the transition between a traditional health model to a skills-based health model. So, the functional knowledge that I shared with you earlier in the ninth grade, for example, that can change. You know, today it's vaping, three years from now, it may be something else. So, we anticipate that that will change. We don't need to rewrite our whole skills-based curriculum as a result of that functional knowledge changing. And so, that's the most significant difference from a traditional health model, where I come and I teach you, "Don't smoke," versus a model where we're teaching actually the skill of analyzing the influences, and hopefully students will be able to generalize that to any content, not just what's happening right now in terms of contemporary issues. We will be studying the middle, the middle school model in relation to other content areas. So, currently, we do cluster our eight standards into seventh and eighth grade. We do not teach health in sixth grade. So, as we study other content areas in the model to middle school, we may consider if there's a shift possibly to sixth grade. Currently, we do teach health-related topics in advisory and flex. The developmental guidance program has many of the same competencies or standards in their curriculum that we do in health education, bringing back the point of integration as much as possible. We also need to revisit our physical education curriculum and how this curriculum can then support the standards that are in our health education, along with those that you'll hear about in a minute around social emotional learning. So, to transition, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, the canopy is health and wellness, and we have many different ribs, another one being that of social emotional learning. So, the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning called CASL, the acronym is CASL, does not have standards, but rather they work in competencies. So, these are the competencies of which they work under, many of which are similar, or the content would be similar to the standards in the National Health Education, National Health Education Standards, and for that matter, even some of the guidance standards. So, this is where we began to really do as much work as we could with integrating around both of these areas. Our goals with social emotional learning was to create environments that are safe, joyful, engaging, and provide students with a sense of belonging. Ultimately, we knew that that was a shift that we had to make, especially with the health education model at the high school, where students were possibly a ninth grader, could have been taking the health course with an 11th grader. And so, we really wanted it to be safe, and enjoyable, and developmentally appropriate. Our staff has been trained and have been trained and continue to be trained in Responsive Classroom One. It's a pretty comprehensive training, it requires a lot of time, and so that is an ongoing process. Responsive Classroom Two, which is the secondary level, and we do have teachers moving towards responsive classroom certification. We had our special education and student service staff, some of them trained in DBT, that work will continue into next year. We look to integrate the CASL, which are the social emotional learning competencies, across K-8 as much as possible, and I'll show you an example of that. And we really wanted to be sure that we created a toolkit for our teachers to meet the personalized needs of our students. So, here are those, here are those five competencies, oops, backwards, that I mentioned earlier. This document's pretty comprehensive, so I don't want you to be overwhelmed with it, but along the left-hand side, we actually have the CASL competency. And so, for example, this is kindergarten, this is self-awareness. We took it a step further, we looked at other districts that actually looked at what self-awareness really means for a kindergarten student. This isn't an expectation of mastery, but it's an expectation of what does self-awareness really mean if I'm a five or six-year-old? It means that I can identify basic emotions, sad, happy, scared, describe and understand what causes emotions, identify likes and dislikes, identify and maintain my personal space. So, we do this throughout every competency, across every grade level. We've actually worked through these ICAN statements, K-12. And we've revised them and collected feedback from our teachers. Along the top are the many resources that we have throughout our district. So, we really looked at the five competencies and wanted to identify, where do we already teach into this competency, and where do we not? So, are there particular skills that our children aren't really experiencing in our classrooms? And if we don't, and where it doesn't exist, we need to create something. And so, if I went alongside here, you can see, hyperlinked in here are the different units. So, this is Unit One, Lesson Three, Emotional Wellness, coming from our new health curriculum. So, you can see that integration there. You might see it across our other resources, Second Steps, as you know, that was a resource that our district invested in a number of years ago. It's still here, because there are some very specific lessons that actually get to that competency, and so we didn't want to move away from that if it was there. In addition to that, we found that there were some gaps with some competencies, and therefore, we created opportunities, and whether that was a read-aloud, an interactive read-aloud, or perhaps a separate lesson, or looked at other resources for our teachers. And then, when it came to meeting the personalized needs of our students, and this is again a draft document, but we looked at what are some of the internalizing behaviors that we noticed with our student? We've done externalizing behaviors, this is a quick screenshot of, you know, a 40-page document that identifies what are some of the challenges that our children face. So, if this, then that, what are some of the whole class objectives that we can support our children with? And then, what are some of the individual strategies? And if we needed to create a goal, what might that look like? And then, how would we progress monitor that? So, this is still in draft form, but it gives you a sense of how we're increasing the capacity of our teacher toolkit to meet the personalized needs of students. In terms of next steps, we continue to grow and get smarter in the area of social emotional learning. It's a topic that you can read about across almost any article, and whether it's mindfulness, or ruler, or restorative justice, or restorative practices, or trauma-based teaching, we want to get better, and we want to increase that capacity as much as possible for all of our staff. So, that's certainly a next step in terms of continuing that work, and getting smarter and better at this work. We also want to revisit the work that has been completed this year with our new psychologists that were just approved finally last night, along with our school counselors, and seeing where we can continue to integrate as much as possible, and where do we see duplicates? And sometimes, we just fall upon them, and we just really want to be purposeful around that. We want to continue that work at the secondary level as well, and we want to be sure that we're providing resources for families and teachers. So, this, just briefly, is another example of a website that we've started for our teachers, it will look similar for our parents. Again, CASL is the acronym for the Social Emotional Learning Competencies. If I clicked on kindergarten, and I'm just going to pick a book here, Be a Friend, the topics are differences in friendships. And here, we have an interactive read-aloud, it actually has the competency of the CASL, which is relationship skills. The ICAN statement is we want students to be a loyal and considerate friend, the topic, there it is, you have, your materials are before reading, during reading, and then we've taken it a step further to identify the connections to other content areas. So, here you can see Social Studies Unit One, Lesson 10, our health unit, which is new, Unit One, Lesson Six, and then there's hyperlinks associated with each. We want to be able to provide PD from parents, we hear from parents that they don't really know what Responsive Classroom is, and want to know more about it, what does logical consequences mean, why do you do that, rather than perhaps a more traditional consequence that they perhaps experienced when they were children. And there you go.
Thank you. We have been waiting for this presentation, so I appreciate it. It was very thorough. Board questions, Mrs. Stein?
Thank you, very thorough. So, looking at the health education curriculum, it looks like we used a lot of frameworks, the, you know, National Health Education Standards, Connecticut State Standards, all these sort of best practices. Can you talk a little bit about how you're taking feedback from what's actually going on in our schools to inform curriculum, and what maybe facing elementary school kids, middle school kids, high school kids, and adapting the curriculum and making it fit Darian in terms of what our students are experiencing and where their gaps, and, like I would say, as just teeth brushing even for high schoolers, they still need to be reminded, I mean, silly, stupid things, but, you know, it shouldn't just be in kindergarten. That's an easy light example, there are others like vaping and juuling and other things that, you know, are we looking at what's really going on in the schools, and how is that informing this curriculum?
So, I will speak to that a little bit, is that when we began this work, that was actually what took us the most amount of time, is that we collected feedback from parents across all three levels, we collected feedback from teachers on what was actually being taught versus perhaps what, at that time, the state standards, I think, was the guideline. We actually collected some feedback from students that had left the district, that were already in college, and from there, we actually identified the categories of health. While they're not all included in the screenshots that I've provided you, they are in our scope and sequence. And though, that's where those elements came in, and then the functional knowledge, which is a little bit of what you described in terms of the second part of your question, that is related to those categories of health. So, the standard, for example, might be in ninth grade, that students will comprehend concepts related to health promotion and disease prevention to enhance health. The functional knowledge might be asking children to manage and assess risks of protective factors that can impact their health sexually. It could be coping strategies, it could be unhealthy relationships, threat coercion, communication, how do you, how do you communicate when you're in those situations? Not exactly to the teeth brushing idea, but healthy nutrition concepts, healthy and balanced eating versus obsessively eating. So, those are some of the different pieces. It's far too comprehensive for me to share with you now, but that is the benefit of a skills-based health model, is that you can change that functional knowledge to be whatever is contemporary.
Add to whatever.
That is, yes.
Suzy, may I just add to Ms. Stein's question, one piece also. Some of the resources we've chosen to enlist for DBT, for example, we've already begun to train all of our guidance counselors, psychologists, social workers, and some special teachers who have been identified, to really work on some of the targeted areas of anxiety, depression, stressors that students have, beginning as early as elementary school, and really working on designing programs and training our teachers to work with it. So, I think the resources we've chosen to invest in this year and next year support the social emotional learning and some of the design that the state requires that Suzy spoke to, too.
Mrs., if I saw Mrs. Ritchie, no?
I'm the only one.
Mrs. McCann?
On that point, I love the way that the curriculum is structured to handle changes to contemporary issues. Are we prepared for the potential legalization of marijuana, if that comes?
I, I'll actually, I'll move it over to Callie and Ally.
Are any of us prepared for the legalization of marijuana that comes?
I actually will speak to that for a minute, because that, that is what's unique about this type of model in teaching health education versus a model where we would teach into that. And so, I'll allow, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but the reality is, whether the legalization happens or doesn't happen, how are students analyzing the influences? Whether those are community influences, whether those are peer influences, because they can, they'll need to generalize that to marijuana today and something else tomorrow. And so, while that may be a functional knowledge topic, they may want to do some research on what that actually may mean for their body and everything else, but the truth is, we're not focused on that, we're focused on the skill. Did you want to add anything to it?
I think that's also the beauty of this skills-based curriculum, is, you know, if marijuana gets legalized tomorrow, or five years from now, students can use those skills that they learned in any one of these grades to access information and make their own choices based on the information available.
We will be giving them the skills, but also some information, and so we are, we are aware that we need to be thinking about the possibility of gathering it.
That's correct. That's, so actually, Ally just mentioned the standard of accessing information. We- information. We, part of our units of study certainly provides students with reliable sources in which to access information, but part of it is helping them understand that there are unreliable sources, right? So you're not going to look at an ad that says that cigarettes are safe from Marlboro. But that's part of being sure, and that's, those are the skills that they're taught in health education. So how do you analyze those sources now and tomorrow, regardless of the contemporary issue?
Thank you.
Mrs. McAdams?
Could you clarify in your presentation, thank you, I mean, it's beyond thorough, when you refer to "we," who is owning this curriculum? And some places, it is a class, as you mentioned, and other times, it's just a way to approach learning. So it's not always a time. But we didn't see someone up here for health, per se, or maybe, so who's owning this curriculum going forward?
In terms of the unit, so there's two parts to that. The teachers at the middle school and high school, where there are courses, naturally own it in a different way than your elementary teachers. Your elementary teachers will most certainly teach their units. Their units will look very different than a course. And so we're in the process of being very thoughtful about how we create units at the elementary level and what they look like. As much as possible, we would love to be able to integrate. I think the physical education piece will add another element to it. But there are some units that our classroom teachers will absolutely be responsible for. In terms of the writing of these units, we do have a consultant that is helping us alongside our teachers. Our teachers have been very active at the secondary level, high school, middle and elementary, in determining what are some of the functional knowledge that our students need to know, understand, and be able to do that's contemporary right now, the vocabulary that's associated with it. But we wanted to be sure that when we were looking at these, at these units of study, that they were, they were really guided by experts in the field. You met one of our consultants last year. She's been supporting us along the way. But really, it needs to be owned, and we've talked about this a lot around curriculum writing, it needs to be owned by our teachers. And I know that I did see, oh, there he is, Mr. DeMaio in the back, Mr. Manfredonia. They have been a part of this process all along the way. So none of this work has been done in isolation. We've collected feedback from our teachers. They've been a part of developing the unit templates so that we can begin this work. But our teachers, and really, I think it's slightly different at the secondary level, but everybody owns, everybody owns it.
Then who ensures the fidelity of the instruction as we heard from the first presentation?
Our school administrators do.
Okay. So it'll be the building administrator responsible for this?
Absolutely.
So given that we have two health teachers here in front of us, can you talk a little bit about, I think it's wonderful, and I'm so excited to have something like this for our kids. I think it's sorely needed in the community. Can you talk a little bit about how you get a middle schooler or a high schooler to buy into this? I mean, if I sit my middle schooler down and I say, let's talk about anxiety, they're on their phone in 16 seconds. Or if I say, don't vape, they're on their phone in five seconds. So how do you, I think this is great for adults, and I love it, but how do you get the kids to buy into it so it's impactful to them?
I can speak to that. So I think that with skills-based, it kind of naturally becomes intriguing to them. For example, with the analyzing influences standard, we would maybe be looking at advertisements or other media messages that are really true to them in their real life or in that outside world, outside of the classroom. So it becomes naturally intriguing to them in a lot of ways. And keep in mind that this is all student-centered. So we are guiding the skills and we are providing the functional knowledge as necessary, but they are the ones that are really diving in and learning the skill in whatever way they feel intrigued or they feel personally connected to. So for example, if they were doing a project, they would have many different options of topics to choose from, because the project would be based on the skill itself, not on the topic.
Okay. And then is there a feedback loop? Let's say, I mean, I love, in the best of worlds, that kids buy in 100%. And so actually, we start learning more and more about what's going on in schools that, like, quite frankly, adults just don't see. Is there a feedback loop that would then help us adjust such that the topic would adjust and the skill implementation is already there?
So I, two pieces to that. I think that what we shared out in our units of study with the exit slips, the pre-assessment, is a really important piece for our teachers, because as they're walking in, we're going to have an understanding of what kids know before we even teach them. And then most certainly, the exit slips after each lesson in our benchmark assessments give us an understanding of how we need to adjust and refine these units. To Dennis's earlier question about when is the work done, this work is never done, because you have a new group of students, different topics come up, kids come to the, to the experience very differently with different levels of maturity, which is really unique. And there's a parental influence to this as well, and a community influence. But to Ally's point, I think, and a little bit to what I said earlier about the staff development, evolving our staff development at the secondary level to being more project-based, more student-centered, I think does lift the level of engagement from kids.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So you touched on it just now. This is fantastic that we're having this here in our schools, but I think a component that's really important is community and parental support and engagement. And how, how do we, as the Board of Education and administrators, make sure that the community and the parental community is involved and engaged? Because we can do this in the school level, but it needs to be supported at all levels. So is there something we can do?
Probably at some point, I think we are early in this process. We have talked a lot about how we intend on communicating this with parents, not just the email or the letter, sharing the unit overview. Certainly, we want to provide parents with resources. We've begun drafting the website, the parent website. You know, this, the intention of a powerful health and wellness program or approach is not just this health curriculum, but it's really involving the whole school, the whole community into the process. The benefit, though, of having the skill-based model is, we're hopeful that students will be able to generalize this to wherever they are. And not only that, but to the content, regardless of the content. So this happens to be content that, or functional knowledge that I think, from the outside perspective, can be a little sensitive. But hopefully, these skills can be generalized to anything and anywhere that they go.
Mrs. McAdams?
Related to that, I am anticipating with the rollout of a new health curriculum, questions from the community about how we define norms around sexuality and potentially also the use of alcohol and tobacco. Do I understand from the purple outlines that we're using state-driven models, that that's where that guidance is coming from? Or where is that coming from?
So this, the state does give us guidance on best practice, and what the research suggests is most effective in terms of, again, what you just described is functional knowledge. And so, you know, certainly, we, we teach students, for example, that abstinence, for example, is the most effective way in reducing unwanted, or, you know, in preventing unwanted pregnancy, and most certainly STIs, sexually transmitted infections. Having said that, we also teach children to analyze effectiveness of other contraceptives. That's part of the skill, and many different skills, whether that's relationship skills or analyzing sources. But it really does come back to the skill. I don't know, ladies, if you want to add anything to that?
Mrs. McAdams?
Sorry, staying on the same point, just to clarify, the teaching of contraception skills or choices is part of the state curriculum? Did I hear that correct?
The, you want to answer that?
I can, yeah. So, right. So there are very comprehensive guidelines that the state provides, and contraception is one of the highly recommended components, yes.
Okay. So it's not required. So I can imagine this might be a controversial topic in some families. How are you going to address that? A letter will go out? I mean, I think there are some topics which you'll deal with that are fairly uniform, to which we would want to see the entire community and parent body on board. I think you're going to have other topics that are more controversial.
Can we back up one second? Do you currently teach contraception? Has that been part of, part of, or are you saying this is new? My understanding is that it's, sorry, go ahead. I'll let you answer.
Whether it's, so the, the short answer to that is, we are teaching the skills. So for example, standard five is students will demonstrate the ability to use decision-making skills to enhance health. Within that standard, and it'll come up later as well in other standards, within that standard, we have a number of different pieces of functional knowledge. Part of it could be the decision to be sexually active, delay, or practice abstinence while considering functional knowledge.
So I understand, I understand where you're going, Dr. Silla. I think to Mrs. McAdams' question is, this isn't a change for the community, that the idea of contraception is being taught in health classes?
That is not a change.
And I think that's what you're talking about, is this a change, that parents need to be aware of the change? Contraception is taught in health classes.
The changes that-
We are now approaching it differently.
That's correct. The change is focused on the skill.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Maroni?
I'd really like to echo, first off, I would like to thank you for this presentation, because I was pretty critical about it last year and where we were. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the preparation done here. But I really think that Mrs. Ritchie is spot on as a community. As I was reading something this week that said, the World Health Organization put out a study that said 18% of the adult population has mental health issues. And so I think we really, you know, I don't know if it's on the school to do this, but, you know, if parents are having mental health issues, I think it's going to be very difficult for them to relate to their children, or maybe not. But if they, if they're not diagnosed with it, I think we, I think the onus is going to be on the school system to help parents as well, and families in the community. And maybe that's where this starts, to help, help that. So I really think we need to develop some type of outreach to the community and parents.
Well, I just, again, these units are not completely fleshed out. But just an example of some of the work, Dennis, that our students would be working on, standard is that students will demonstrate the ability to access valid information, products and services to enhance health. Our students would then be expected to access valid information, products, services in school, family and community, to questions related to mental health, anxiety, depression, stress management, and eating disorders. Those are just some of the examples. But that's part of the work that students are doing, is trying to find and access resources, not only within their school, but outside into their community to support themselves and family. So that is part of the work that students were doing. Again, I showed you one example of one of the units. I'm certain if I pulled up another, you'd have a better example of some of the functional knowledge that we are expecting our students to perform. I don't know if there's anything else, Ally or Callie, that I missed on that. But the depth is there within the functional knowledge of students being able to do the heavy lifting around some of the standards, really.
So I think to Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Maroni's point, Dennis and I would put a different word toward it. I'm not sure if it's the school's responsibility to the community, but it certainly is a partnership. And I think Mr. Burke touched on this a few weeks ago. There is a partnership as citizens of a community that we are looking to engage. We have your kids six and a half hours of the day, and so we're working to do this. But any outreach we can do, community and school, where valid and appropriate, is probably wise as a community of Darien as a whole. I just be careful who we start labeling responsible for outside of the school day.
Right. But we also, you know, with our, our SES supports at each of our school, whether it's our school psychologists, our social workers, we do have outreach available to our students. And this is different. This is, you know, part of our curriculum. It's part of the practice that students will be engaged in. But when students need additional resources, we most certainly have them as well.
Mr. Brown?
Two quick questions. One, just following up on this point with the functional knowledge. In terms of the key terms you have listed, we could go down the list. Just kind of following up on the questions that were asked, do we have, like, say, two more columns, one that says state requirement, yes, no, and one that says currently taught, yes, no, for some of those functional knowledge items that are in the list? I think that's kind of the information we're looking at. Is this stuff currently taught and is it required to be taught? So I don't know if that's something that really makes sense, or if the community would have interest in, and if that's something perhaps we could investigate. The other thing was, when we went back earlier, you had the example of the children's book, and that was terrific. It was beautifully well-done, and had learning objectives. At the bottom, it also had where those skills would apply in other course areas. And going back to grammar, so if I wanted to have that someday for grammar, for social studies, or for history, or for biology, any sort of reporting, that there's certain grammar requirements that cross-link, is that something we envision being able to have that level of sophistication of? Do we have that yet? Is that one of the objectives, to have this level of sophistication in some of the other programs?
The level of sophistication with respect to grammar, we certainly have that at the elementary school. I heard Mr. Janosko speak about his goal to have that at the secondary level as well, a scope and sequence with grammar. I think that answers that part of the question. We do outline in our curriculum, again, these are draft documents, where it's colored differently for our staff, where something is a guideline from the State Department of Ed versus a national standard versus a social emotional expectation. These key terms can change at any time. These are associated with some, and some of them may not directly influence, be aligned to this unit. We might find that food and drug administration isn't something we're necessarily going to need to teach here, but we may need to teach it later. So this is a brainstorm of key terms that our teachers may believe that our teachers, our students need to know.
No, agreed. I wouldn't expect this list to be perfect at all times. This would obviously be a snapshot now. I was just trying to inform that. And again, I appreciate that, you know, it was addressed earlier, but I mean, I thought that level of sophistication was excellent.
Thank you.
I would love to, you know, see that rolled out across some other subjects as well.
Thank you. Dr. Landon?
I'd just like to come back to two points that were raised, one by Mr. Brown and Mrs. Ritchie. The question of, we know what we're teaching, and that's, the community knows what we're teaching. And there'll be new approaches and new phraseology and new lessons. So my only advice is that there'd be a significant number of meetings where the administration can present to the community, so that there are no misunderstandings as to what is going to be taught and how it is going to be taught. Because if you don't do that, I'm fearful that there will be individuals within the community who will take advantage of the unknown, if you will, and parlay it into deep, deep problems, both in, in presenting our social and emotional health curriculum. And it'll cause great, I think it could cause problems for the schools. So my advice is only present publicly, let parents get involved, community members get involved, the informational meetings, and address the issues upfront. And I think by doing that, you'll be in the best position.
Thank you. Very in-depth presentation, with a very full agenda. Are there any other questions this evening? Okay, thank you. I'm sure we will hear more health updates, and we will appreciate hearing as this moves along. We will move on to the presentation of the Special Education Extended School Year. Mrs. Shirley Klein?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the board this evening an overview and update on our planning for the summer's ESY. Sheerah Schwartz indefatibly has worked closely with our SES facilitators, Laura Straighton, our ELP program coordinator, Scott McCarthy, our secondary program coordinator, as well as Kristin O'Reilly and Michael DiStefano in really planning and preparing for this year's ESY program. Sheerah's here to present the overview for you this evening.
Do you need my help with technology?
We have it here, so we can keep going. You all will just have to be patient and follow along a little later. I'm going to keep us moving tonight.
Here's the card.
Nope, you're good.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to come and present on our progress thus far on our 2019 summer plans. We're really excited about the progress that we've been making so far. It's been a year-long effort, as some of you know, and we're, we're looking really good as we gear up for summer. So just to reorient folks to the purpose of ESY and why we are required through regulation to provide these services. There are a couple of new faces, so just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. The Darien Public Schools and all public school districts are required to provide extended school year services during the months of, during the summer months for children with IEPs who meet eligibility criteria for these services. And so the decision is made by each student's planning and placement team meeting. Those decisions are made on an individual basis every year, and we consider a variety of areas that would make a student eligible for services. So specifically, we look at the nature and the severity of the disability, what the student needs, learning-wise, in order to make progress towards independence, and then we also look at two concepts which I think you hear folks talk about a lot, which is regression and recruitment. So how much might the student regress in terms of their skills and abilities if they have a break in learning over the summer? And likewise, how quickly is the student able to pick up where he or she left off at the end of the school year when they come back in September if we weren't to provide additional services? So that's who we provide services for and why. And so just to share with you where we are in terms of recommendations, back in 2017 is when we first started sharing recommended versus actual data. So recommended really means the number of kids whose PPTs made the children eligible to receive these services and planned a program, whether that's special education teacher time or other related services. The actual number refers to the actual number of children who come to Darien High School or come to Tokenique to receive those services. And in the past, we've talked about the different reasons why students may or may not actually show up. Very often, the recommended number, as you can see historically, has been higher than the actual number, but in terms of recommendations, we have been tracking fairly consistently over the years, and we anticipate a similar consistency in terms of the actual students who will be participating in our program this year. I'm pleased to share that all of our staff, for the most part, was hired in February of this year. You can see that we are pretty consistent with the number of staff that we're hiring, and as we hear more about what students' plans are, and as, you know, last-minute PPTs are happening to tweak or refine programs, we may add or change up what our staffing looks like, but for now, this is where we are. And this number is comprised of all of the different special education staff, from certified staff to paraprofessionals. And then this breakdown gives you sort of an understanding of who, how many different folks we have at the high school and at Tokenique. So in terms, we have special education teachers, speech and language pathologists, psychologists, and behavior analysts, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and paraprofessionals in place to really provide an entire continuum of services over the summer. And in terms of this split, meaning the number of staff that are represented in each category and the proportionality, it's very similar to in the past. And I just want to echo Shirley's sentiments, you know, our building-based folks have really undertaken a Herculean effort to really get this done. We actually got our schedules out to families five days sooner than last year, which is a big hooray for us. Staffing and hiring was also slightly ahead of time, and our PPT process and processes have just been getting smoother and more timely, and it helps us to plan for our programs further, so a huge debt of gratitude to everyone.
Great. Thank you very much.
Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any board questions? Mrs. McNamara?
Thanks, Shirley.
Could you address, since 2017, where you were reporting recommended versus actual, how that works into your staffing?
Sure. So we really do go off of the actuals.
Okay.
Yeah, we, so it's actually a little bit, it's a little bit of both, right? So we try to plan for every single student coming to us, and then we take into account the trends of the students who have actually shown up, and we do a lot of follow-up with families to make sure that they let us know ahead of time whether they're planning on coming or not. That said, we also communicate to families that if their plans were to change at the last minute, come on down, we're ready for you, and then that informs our groupings. So there's a whole cascade that goes into what we do with staffing.
Okay, so you don't find yourself with a teacher with no children?
No.
Okay, that was my concern. Oh, I may just have another question. Just to clarify, that transportation is based upon the recommendation of the PPT and not just because of your enrollment?
We provide transportation, so transportation provides access to the program, and so if a child is recommended for ESY and they require transportation in order to get to their program, we do that, and we provide that.
I'm sorry, could I just ask a follow-up, just to clarify?
Yep.
If...
So may I just add to that, maybe I can have one?
Yeah, I'm still a little confused.
It's recommended at the PPT.
Yes.
So transportation is IP-generated, it's recommended at the PPT.
Based upon the individual student, not their general recommendation for ESY?
Correct.
As it had been in the past?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So transportation equals access to education?
Correct.
But only for those students who need it, not because you're just participating, as it had been in the past? So that's a change of practice? So I just wanted to clarify.
No.
I don't think it, I don't think it is.
Oh, it definitely is.
Okay. I can only speak for the length of time we've been doing it?
Before you, I can speak that it was a different practice prior to you.
The state defines transportation as part of access to education, and so where transportation is necessary in order to access education, we provide transportation. Is that a correct statement?
But it is, and it is done on an individual basis.
Okay. On an individual basis, thank you.
Mrs. McCann?
Part of what makes this program so successful is not just the delivery of services that you've outlined here, but also the wonderful opportunities that are available through DSS. Can you talk about your work with DSS and how you make those connections happen? And are we satisfied with how that is for all of our students, both historically and upcoming, this upcoming year?
Sure. So before, I want to say sometime in the winter, very early spring, I get in touch with the folks who are planning Darien Summer School. Obviously, at the end of the summer, when I get the parent feedback, I share that back with Caitlin and Mark, and we make sure that we are looking at that and making sure that we're planning opportunities for, for kids with IEPs to meaningfully participate. What I will say this year, in the ESY PPTs that I have participated in, I've seen a really nice increase in the PPT's ability to describe Darien Summer School opportunities for children. A lot of that is due in large part to the staff that work over the summer, and they're coming in and out of Darien Summer School classes, so they're really able to speak to, you know, participating in this class is really great because, and here's how it's aligned to the child's program. So I think we're getting increasingly better at our collaboration with Darien Summer School, as well as our ability to connect general education opportunities to the areas of growth and work that children need to do over the summer.
May I add one more thing to that also? Sheer worked very closely with Caitlin this year. Feedback we received from parents last year was, unfortunately, some of the courses parents enrolled their students in were not able to run because of enrollment, and we wanted to find out how we can anticipate that and plan accordingly. So Sheer, do you want to speak to that, your coordination to make sure that that doesn't occur again, or to the best of our ability?
So what we've done is we've asked the DSS folks to run a list for us of all of the DSS classes that children with IEPs are either enrolled in or recommended for, and we've also asked them to flag for us any classes that might be, that might be even slightly under-enrolled, so that we can take a look at that, make a note of it, encourage where we think appropriate, some more enrollment so that that class gets off the ground, and where that's appropriate, and likewise, to be ahead of the game in terms of coming up with some backup plans. And I know that based on last year, when the classes were canceled, our PPTs have been saying, have been coming up with a variety of options, so that if a class were to be canceled due to low enrollment, we have some backup options as well. But we've been communicating and getting the download from Caitlin and her folks. Thank you. Sure.
Mr. Maroni?
If I recall from last year, the transition from the end of the school year to the beginning of summer school was very difficult. And I don't recall if that was just due to the cafeteria, or was it due to the end of graduation, but what did we put?
It was cafeteria, snow days.
Snow days.
But graduation being, being on a Thursday or Friday, so there wasn't enough time. So my question is, what lessons did we learn then, and are we prepared, we better prepared this year for that transition?
I'll turn it over to Sheer, but we learned that when it snows, it impacts on what we're going to do for planning. So the weather does predict our coordination of events, and we did have to come in on weekend, but luckily, we haven't had that issue this year. We have enough time to prepare.
And frankly, our staff are incredible. They come in whenever they need to, to set up and make sure that they're ready for kids, and I have to commend the ESY staff for their dedication to doing that.
Mrs. McNamara?
The ESY program or the summer school, I know, for, have you ever thought, or would it be ever appropriate, to bring in students from other communities?
For ESY programming specifically? I hadn't thought about that, but I do know that other, students from other districts participate in the general education opportunities.
That's why, I was thinking of that, and you were mentioning low enrollment, I just was kind of going there, based upon a couple of your comments you've just made.
So, but I think because we're not the local education, oh, go ahead.
No, and I just want to add one, the best way to respond to that also is, one of the pieces that we really take pride in our ESY is we actually know our students, know their work, know the teachers, and we're able to, in a very appropriate and proper way, plan for the summer program for them. When you don't know students, you really can't do that the same way. And because we have teachers who really work with teachers, I mean, they really have planned, our work is already coordinated, of work that's being turned over to teachers, students that are being grouped together because of group ability, so you can't do that when you take in students from other districts. You know, you compromise the fidelity and the integrity of the program. That said, sometimes you do it for more social groups, or for some activities that may not have the same academic or related service provision, but it's hard to be successful in the design of that program.
So we've had some critiques in the past about regularity of our transportation services for ESY. Do we feel like we have a handle on that this year, and we're in a good spot?
We've communicated our transportation needs to the vendor, actually around, I want to say, almost around the same time as we did last year, and so we're communicating with them constantly. I think we have some new contacts over at the transportation vendor that, you know, we're sharing our lessons learned, and, you know, how important it is to make sure that transportation is consistent. The first week invariably is a little bit bumpy, but, you know, I would say that last year, transporta- being out with the buses at all three of the opportunities for pickup and drop-off, I will say that by the end of the first week, we were really ironed out and smooth, so that's encouraging.
Perfect. Mr. Dine?
Mr. Feeney, are any of our, our vehicles used in the summer program for transportation?
Yes, they are.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we wish everyone a great ESY and summer school program. Mrs. Dunn and Mrs. Summers, you're up. We have the verbal update on the high school and the middle school scheduling.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the schedule. As you know, the process begins with the course selection. Our students have been through that process, have met with their school counselors to refine those selections. Following that, the department leadership meets with me to take a look at the numbers of sections that we'll need for all of the courses offered, and their next step is to decide how to use their staffing in the best way possible for our kids. Now Paul is in the role of full-time scheduler and is inputting all of that data. He's got almost all of that done, and his, his next step is to do what we call the build in scheduling, and so the programming used in Aspen does a really nice job of taking all of the components that we put in and building a schedule. He's in that process right now. It will begin to give you what are called fatal errors, which is a very scary piece of information when you're building a schedule. But in fact, that list of errors, you can chip off and correct, run the build again, run the build again, and so it's kind of a puzzle that you have to work out. Once you're comfortable with that, the loading of students happens next, and so that should be happening next week. And once that load is kind of perfected to the point where he can't make it work any better, then it gets turned over to our counselors, because now it's an individualized process rather than a global process. They will take a look at the students they know well, understand where the conflicts are, meet with the students to say, you might need to make a choice here, what's your second choice for this, to kind of put together the very best plan that we can for them. We expect by the eighteenth, maybe before, to be able to release to students their course picture. That will include all the courses that they will be taking in the fall. That comes to them through an alert in Aspen, and that won't include teacher names or room numbers or periods at that point. That's because there will be still a lot of work to be done over the summer. On the other side of the work are the kinds of things that we talk about when we give you your report on the sections and the teacher assignments and so forth, twice a year, and that comes in balancing sections, changes to teachers, teachers who may resign over the summer or make other decisions. That change in educator in the department may cause some different decisions to be made about teaching assignment. So we are constantly, kind of the theme tonight, is you're constantly working on these things until school opens, in fact. And so there is time, once that's released, for students to come in. The last two days after graduation, our teachers come in on the nineteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-first, counselors are there all day to meet with students. Megan is here all summer, except for when she has some vacation time, and counselors come in occasionally over the summer as well, respond to emails when students have concerns or changes to what they want to pursue. And then the two days preceding the arrival of teachers in August, that would be twenty-second and twenty-third, are also days where counselors are looking at schedules with students to clarify problems before we start. So we're right on track for where we should be, and he's had a lot of experience with the schedule on the other end, so he brings some wisdom to that as well, so I'm confident in that.
Just quickly, as we build the schedule for the incoming ninth graders, we will, we will build and/or look for problems for the new graduation requirements.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Summers?
So like the high school, we have been working on this process for some time, and we have several goals. By 5:29, we hope to give a hard copy to each student of a list of the courses, just a list of the things, to make sure we didn't leave math out, or we didn't, we didn't put them in band when they don't play an instrument. By 6:12, we'll give them a hard copy of an actual schedule, but it won't have those all-important team colors and team names, and we like them to puzzle that out outside of school. And then approximately two weeks before school ends, in conjunction with the high school, we'll make that live, and then we will leave, because then the phones ring about why isn't my kid on this team. But these are my fatal error eradicators, new title, and they will give you an update as to where we are in achieving each of these deadlines.
So Mary and I took over the scheduling process this year. We went through an Aspen training along with Paul, which was lovely. So similar to what Ms. Dunn was speaking of, we have built the schedule out and did the load process today. We started the day with sixty-one fatal errors, and we're down to zero fatal errors. So we were able to load the kids in today.
So the next step is really just looking at teacher schedules, looking with the counselors, at student schedules, making sure that students with IEP services are scheduled for everything that was recommended in the PPT, so we'll have a thorough look at all of that before the students over those requests on day twenty-ninth in their flex classes.
One of our primary focuses has really been on kind of streamlining and consistency, just taking an overall look at the picture of rooms, teams, where things are located in the building, and just trying to make things as easily accessible for students as possible, thinking about that team model, so that, you know, colors are close by, kids aren't traveling or traversing the building more than they need to be, and we really have teachers having access to their kids as much as possible.
Any questions?
So at this point, do you know which teachers are on what team?
I'm not asking for information.
That is like top secret, just say no, even if you do.
And there have been some changes, because there's been some personnel changes, and when we look at teams, we have to look at what's best for students as they receive that, teaching across the disciplines. So we work very hard on that. What team, looking at teacher personalities, who works well with others, what looking at teacher personalities, who works well with others, what kind of collaboration we can expect, how we can make some of our areas interdisciplinary and so on. So, it's a, it's quite a puzzle.
Mrs. McMar.
I know in the elementary schools, there was that opportunity for parents to share their thoughts.
Absolutely.
Does that figure into your?
We welcome that. We welcome that at all grade levels, and usually that's communicated to me. We've had a, a huge help from our school counselors this year, and so then I give that information to the school counselor, and, and we act upon it.
Is that process formalized, or is it more just the parent picks up the phone and just calls you? Like a sheet of paper?
I, I think it's, it's kind of known.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for staying very late for those very quick updates. Thank you. The high school as well.
We're just going over to school now to start.
They have zero fatal errors. They can sleep all night. All right, we will move on to the running track. Mrs. Jennifer Montanero is here for the D A F to give us an update. This was a last-minute add to the agenda, so thank you for your patience. I see Mr. Manfredonia back there. Thank you for this. If we have questions, correct? All right, and Mrs. Dunn, wherever you'd like. As a reminder, this is an update. The process here is that when the board made this motion, it was to go through all governmental approvals, which means that this will follow a similar model as the lights process. Our final approval will come after the R T M votes. This is a real property issue, so the selectmen will also weigh in, because there's real property affected. So, Mrs. Montanero is here to give us an update on where they've been, who they've talked to, where they are in the process, if we have any questions at that point. I imagine we may, after P and Z's meeting last week, have some small discussion, but Mrs. Montanero is here on behalf of the, the D A F to let us know where they are in the work we kind of sent them out to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Kim Jen Montanero from the D A F. And since I think the last time that you were made privy to what was going on with the running path, we, we've met with Jeremy Ginsburg on January seventeenth. In addition to that, he called a meeting with Dr. Landon, with Pam Geary from Planning and Zoning, from D A F, and from Ty and Bond, the engineers for the, for this process. He, Jeremy laid out the requirements of the proposal, and at that time, because it involves both the high school property and Diller property, which is owned and controlled by the town, he suggested we do two applications for this, and we have them both run concurrently. The Diller property, which is the area coming in, as I'm sure as you all already know this, from Nutmeg Lane, is a loop that the cross-country path will run, come from the high school, run through the Diller property, and back towards the high school. It just completes the loop, so it's a little bit close to about one point three miles if you were to do the full loop. So, the high school is through the Diller property. These are wetlands on Diller property that require substantially a lot more applications and work versus the high school, where there really aren't any wetlands here. So, the Diller application was for the land filing, regrading of the site plan. The high school application, which we filed concurrently, is for the flood damage prevention land filing, uh, land filling and regrading and site plan. Because, I'm probably going to jump back and forth, because we were doing two applications at the same time, and there's a little bit of overlap. As part of the P and Z application, referral was made to Daring Public Works and the local traffic authority, because part of the Diller property on Nutmeg Lane, coming into the high school, there was a request to put six parking spaces, one of them being handicapped, and that is overseen by Daring Public Works and the police commission. Related mandatory referral application was needed for the improvements to the Diller property. However, one wasn't needed for Daring High School, since Jeremy Ginsburg felt that it was not to the, the, the rise was not to the level of substantial, so we didn't require that. So, we met with P and, we met with E P C regarding the Diller property, and we had three public hearings. We had, the commission closed and requested the staff to prepare a resolution approving the application with conditions to be acted upon at their June fifth meeting. It was everything that we had thought that they were going to include. They were very open in their discussions about how to remediate certain areas, and we all felt comfortable with the, the closing of that.
And you all have that. I think I sent that out to you a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. But I should make mention that all of the letters that were submitted, and all of the correspondence from the different town bodies are all in the P and Z website. Everything has been filed right there, so you can access any one of these at any time. The, the portion of the track in the high school was within the commission's jurisdiction, and that was approved on March sixth. And again, that's also on the P and Z website. So, they didn't feel that a public hearing was necessary for the high school portion. Joe Canis of Ty and Bond and Reina Veloski, the wetland scientist, they provided the testimony, and they were, that there were no adverse impacts to the, impacts to the wetlands, or the watercourses within Diller, so they were able to close that. P and Z felt that there was minor regrading on the entire high school, sits in a flood zone, so most of the work is pretty much, they said, within the footprint of the high school, and it's minor regrading, and really running across current areas that are already existing. It doesn't affect wetlands at all. Last week, John Seeny, the commissioner of Planning and Zoning, he closed the public hearing, and they are deliberating this evening, actually. And he assured me that his staff would provide an update memo to all the appropriate parties, of course, and if all goes well, we'll have a final resolution with P and Z on May twenty-eighth. At the P and Z hearing, I should note that Lori Bora, she's the chair of Parks and Rec, she spoke up, and she submitted a letter of support about the project within the Diller property. Jamie Stevenson also submitted a letter of support, which is also online. Last night, I met with the R T M's subcommittee of Planning and Zoning and Housing, P Z and H, and I discussed the plan with them. I had the, the plans laid out, talked to them about the Diller property, talked to them also about how it works together with Daring High School property, and they had a resounding support of the project. They felt really good about the use of the Diller property. They liked the fact that the town can use it on off-hours, et cetera, so they were in full support and arranged for that to go forward. Next week, on the twentieth, the Jamie's Board of Selectmen is going, we're going to be presenting this as well to her committee. At the same time, the R T M Rules Committee, a lot of meetings. Rules Committee will be hearing this, and then they'll be assigning it to other subcommittees. We expect it to probably be Education, Finance, not so sure, but they'll let us know which other subcommittees will be hearing this. Our goal in, we did this for the lights as well as the fields, is, you know, we got in front of a lot of the subcommittees in advance, obviously, of the vote, and as many as we could, just to, to walk through the pro, the whole project, hear what their concerns were, talk to them about what we were doing, and sort of vet out a lot of the, the questions in advance of their final vote, which would be June tenth of this year, before they go on vacation. So, it seemed to work well with the lights, it seemed to work well with the fields, and the pavilion as well. So, we're following the same course of action. Our hope is to meet with some of the subcommittees on June third, and then a final R T M vote on June tenth. Following the June tenth, obviously, we'll come back around to whenever is appropriate to meet with Board of Education and finalize.
I think we're the eleven, if you want another busy week.
All righty then.
Based, based on what they do, we can talk and schedule if that's the next appropriate meeting for your work schedule.
Okay.
Should it move.
I should play, uh, point out that part of the Parks and P and Z application was, they wanted to understand how the cross-country path was going to be used. And so, we consulted with Chris Manfredonia, who then consulted with the head track coach, and they wrote a very detailed description of, you know, the running path, what, you know, the, the size, the scope of it, logistics, timing, how many meets, security, et cetera. And all of that, again, has been submitted as on the P and Z website. So, that should answer a lot of the questions about.
Has the board received a copy of that memo as well? If it was generated from the district?
No, I don't believe I've seen it. So, Chris will share that, and I'll get it out to you.
Thank you.
Okay. That might just be an oversight. My apologies. A lot of people to send information to these days. So, you know, Planning and Zoning, you know, felt it was, whether they had handled it appropriate. I don't think anybody had. I, I think part of the reason that there was a lot of discussion about the cross-country path is, there, there wasn't a lot of knowledge about what goes on at a cross-country meet. You know, I don't, I think there is a misconception that there are going to be droves of fans lining, you know, like it would be a marathon, and it's, it's anything but, which we've learned. It's, you know, possibly fifty spectators. It's very quiet, so when they're running, there, there's not a lot of banter and chatter, because they're using their oxygen just to sort of run, and so, you know, and there's just not a lot of spectators that go. So, we think it's a great use, and we're excited to, to do this. Hopefully, if all goes well, we would start construction over the summer, as soon as school's out. And part of the application is that there's no heavy trucks going in there. A lot of this is manual labor, and it would be a lot of, you know, small machinery, very small machinery, and hand digging, et cetera, to, you know, level out some of these areas. So, very non-invasive when it comes to things that are going on over the summertime at the high school.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying late to give us this update. There may be questions for Mrs. Montanero. We also, I think, need to address some of the concerns that were raised at P and Z. So, if we have, Jen, if you don't mind, if we've got a question to you, we'll direct it, direct it to you. If, as we are talking, you feel like you can be helpful, please feel free to join the conversation. Are there any questions directly for Mrs. Montanero? Mr. Dine?
Jen, just, you probably mentioned, what's the timeline once they start to completion?
Our hope is to be done by the fall.
Based on the other?
Yeah, based on what, yes. Our hope is to be done by the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. McMar.
Yes, sort of feeding a little bit off of the hearing the other day, as far as the path itself and the route that it will take, is that pretty much locked in based upon everything, or is that still fluid from your perspective?
No, it's, it's pretty much locked in. However, you know, until we actually, the high school portion is locked in, I should say. It's the Diller property that, because of the E P C and the wetlands, you know, we use G P S in order to map it out, and there are flags out there. But, when you get in there, you start digging, you know, topography changes, things like that. So, there might be some minor changes.
So, I think, to be accurate, the D A F has planned a track based on the track coaches, and I assume Mr. Manfredonia's instruction. I don't know that we are cross-country experts, but given that it is a high school cross-country track, should the board feel that there need to be alter, alterations? We could communicate that to the administration, but we would need to do that in a timely manner for the D A F.
Well, that's why my follow-up was, because there was feedback from at least one neighbor who was concerned about the proximity to his property. So, I was curious, did that feedback go back to the D A F and to the coach for any alteration?
It, we did look at it. We met with our engineers about it. I've got a, you know, blow-up schematic of it.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, here's the issue with the cross-country path. You know, our kids are running up at Wavine. When they're not on the streets, they're running up at Wavine. What I learned from Rich Jacobson from E P C is that, you know, a good portion of our path, we have what we have in terms of the high school site plan, right, the plot plan. A good portion of our, this cross-country path is running across open fields, not necessarily across, traditional cross-country path, when you think of it.
Right.
But we have what we have, because we do have quite a bit of wetlands. There is a very natural path, if you were to go behind the stadium east and the stadium field along the tennis courts. There's a natural path that cuts along back there, and it also wraps around the northwest field, along the softball field, I believe it's still a softball field up there.
Okay.
The tennis court.
It's for the tennis court.
Yeah, the tennis court, yeah.
Okay, I agree. Okay. And there's an actual natural path that goes along, where there's a kind of a deep ravine, or there's a water course back there.
Right.
And people have been walking on that for quite some time. By pulling, and I know what the neighbor wants, we, we heard him multiple times, we know what he's, he's talking about. If, by pulling that inside the lines of putting it back onto a field, we really don't have a cross-country path. You know, it, it becomes running across fields. You know, there's quite a bit of trees in between his property line, and, you know, to jut it in, I don't think.
Okay, well, I'm sure it would also affect the distance. I mean, that's a factor.
So, before, before we go down, actually, before we go down this route, because if, if we were going to go down this route, we would need the neighbor here to hear kind of both. He, he submitted, I think here's where we are, and so the board can talk. It was presumed that the public hearings would take place at E P C and P and Z. P and Z, and by no means do I pretend to know P and Z's rules, recognized that the running path was not a structure. They felt that within their authority, they were looking at issues of regrading, and I respect that decision. Commissioner Seeny then, when people came forward, said, your, your concerns about garbage, or how close you do this, are really with the Board of Education. They're not with P and Z. So, what we now have in front of us are some neighbors have submitted letters, and so, I don't, I don't think it's on Jen, quite frankly, to have to answer what to do with it. Certainly, the D A F feels very strongly, you know, feels they've put together a good, solid plan.
Well, that's what I, I wanted to confirm. Based upon the feedback, is the D A F still comfortable with the path that you had proposed?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Jen.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. I think if we're gonna, well, it's good the D A F is, that we still have this outstanding neighbor question, and so I'm not, not, what I'm doing is not taking a position yet on how the board feels, because I don't think we've, we've discussed that or heard from the administration.
I don't think we're going there at all. We're just clarifying the path if it has changed.
Mrs. Stein, and then Mrs. Turner.
I, I think what we, and as a board, need to talk about, for those of us who are there, I think some of us left with a sentiment of, are we being good neighbors, and are we giving our neighbors an opportunity to be heard to us as a board? And that's a question I think we need to opine on, not with D A F. And maybe it's up to the administration to come up with a way for us to do that. How, you know, I think while the neighbors spoke at E P C and spoke at P and Z, we haven't heard them as a board, as a collective group. So, I think that is, and our understanding was that it was going to happen, and it didn't. So, I think we're now in a position as a board where we need to discuss what's the proper way for us to proceed that hopefully does not impede your ability to go through this process. You know, you have a lot of meetings coming up. It's a short timeline, so I would defer to the administration to see what ideas they may have.
Well, you know, I'll do whatever the board likes. I must admit, however, that I was shocked. You know, I, I've been in Connecticut in this business for about thirty years. Never have I been engaged in any kind of a project affecting schools and neighbors that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not actually take a position on. You know, I mean, the high school was built on a particular site. The athletic fields were put up with D A F support. The lights were put up. All of that was done.
Lots of D A F support.
Everything was done, and the P A, P and Z fulfilled its responsibilities of hearing input from the public. And I think that's personally where it belongs. On the other hand, if the board feels that I should engage with the neighbors and hear them out, or do so with the subcommittee of the board, I'd be happy to do so. But, you know, I've been involved in this from the very beginning. The invasiveness is minimal. I mean, even, even the track itself requires only some crushed stone. There's nothing, we're not pouring asphalt. We have an agreement with the police department that will put signage up, so that if there's any, if there are dog, if there, if there is dog walking on the track, or if there are unauthorized people on the track during the day, the police will be authorized to come in and remove those people from the site. So, you know, I mean, I feel very confident with what we've done. And I've read the, the letter of protest. One, I don't think it's feasible to reroute the, the track along the direction that, that person wants. I don't see the invasiveness of it, that it requires a fence to separate, you know, the, the property from the neighbors. The property has been unfenced, adjacent, abutting the neighbors since the high school was built. So, I mean, I'll be happy to, to talk to them, and I'll explain to them, you know, just how I feel, at least. Maybe it's better if I go alone. So, I could tell them.
No, I agree with Dr. Lanning, and having participated in the planning and zoning, and talked to the, and talked to the neighbors. I don't know what I'd do without Dennis. He's my neighbor. I, I, I mean, I would recommend that, you know, the administration reach out. We know the specific neighbors, and I think to be good neighbors, and I think someone from the board, myself, myself and Tara, could participate in that conversation. I agree with, we are where we are. I mean, D A F has made a presentation. The coach has made a presentation at a public meeting. It's been at E P C how many times? Two times?
Three times.
Three times. It's been, so, I think we know the specific neighbors, and I think doing the right thing is just spending some time with them. I've been over there and actually looked at the property. The The pictures that were shown at Planning and Zoning in terms of screening and visibility are very different than what it looks like now, because some of the pictures that were shown were taken in the winter. So, screening changes over the course of the year, but I would, I would go along with your recommendation.
So I would say, from being at the meeting, that I feel like there certainly was some misinformation, and in some of the letters we got, people were talking about cross-country in winter, and, and, you know, we're not running in the winter, we're running in the fall, and so to Duke's point, there may be more screening in terms of that kind of over, concern of over-usage and disrupting. But I think we have two options before us. I certainly have a preference, but I think it, it really goes to the board, and given some of the comments at that level, that this is a Board of Education problem, and we heard about garbage, and we heard about screening and setbacks, which would be new for us. But we could do a public hearing if we wanted, or we could authorize the superintendent, since we know who has concerns, to have those conversations, met out those concerns, certainly explain where we are. But I would say, whatever we're going to do, we owe it to the DAF to do, and, and do quickly, so that it's, we're not on June 11th doing it and changing anything. So if there's any concerns, we can raise them. I'm hearing that operationally, there's not concerns, but maybe a desire to be a good neighbor and, and talk these things through. I would imagine, hopefully, something like garbage would not need to include the DAF. We could sort out garbage with the neighbors all on our own, and so, the board can decide, would they like a public hearing schedule? Would they like to authorize the superintendent with kind of some board observers just to be able to report back? I would recommend the board as observers, because this is really, seems to me, operational issues, not, not really participating at a board level. But which, does the board have a sense of which way they'd like to go? Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I, I try to never disagree with Duke, especially when he's right, so I would say to empower the superintendent with some board of observers participating, going and having the conversation, you know, with the neighbor, neighbors, whoever is troubled.
Mrs. McCannon?
I, I think it's consistent with what we have done in this town historically, whether it's the Oxford Building Committee or the lights, we did spend, or the administration typically does spend time with the neighbors, so I, I think that we need to do that to be consistent with what we typically do as a community, and help manage through it. I think the limitation of a public hearing is that it's not a dialogue. So while it would be wonderful to hear, we wouldn't have the ability to really accurately address concerns. So I, I think that a dialogue is fairly critical.
Yes. Mrs. Ritchie?
I agree, I think the plan that Duke just came up with is a good one, and I think I invite the public and the neighbors to always come to the administration with issues as it pertains to garbage, or noise, or whatever else as it pertains, because we do, as a board, want to be good neighbors. So I, you know, this came through a, a different process, through P and Z, not through the Board of Education, but I, I invite people to direct those concerns as far as the DHS property. We don't have control over the Diller property, that's the town property, so I would encourage the public to always feel comfortable coming to us and making sure aware of things right away and not down the line, so.
Anybody else feel strongly on that?
I just want to say, first, I just sent you, I got it, just got it from Chris, the management outline, so you should have it in your email account. And, yes, secondly, you know, I'd be happy to meet with them. As for garbage, I would like to say, after big events, I know, you know, we get complaints about garbage, but I must say that our facilities department has, since I've been here, I know, I, and I'm sure it was that way before, but they, they get out there and clean it up whenever we get a complaint from a neighbor, or a board member or others, about, you know, after a big event, there being garbage on the field. So, I feel confident that if there is any garbage, there shouldn't be any really from cross-country, because there are very few people who, who, you know, it's not like the US Open, you know, it's like, we get very few people for those kinds of needs, I don't think there'd be a lot of garbage if any.
Mr. Maroney?
I'm in favor of the idea of a dialogue as well, but should we also include a representative or two from the town, considering the Diller property is not our property, and we can't speak to what we can do or not do on that property?
No, they should address it on their own, I think.
Yeah, I think they need to address that with the town.
Okay, fair enough.
I think the issue, what we're understanding, are the, on our side.
Yeah. I think what we're trying to say is, if we have any operational issues on our side, we'd like the administration to engage, and I think we can engage without impeding a project, and, and if we can do that, the earlier the better, and now that we know it exists, we're happy to, we're happy to do that.
Yes, and to circle back as to how that dialogue went for the board, I think is important.
Yes, I think we'd have to have the administration report back, and if Duke and I are observing, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, so we don't have a meeting between now and the 11th, right? So perhaps we'll just get a memo or something to that effect.
Yeah.
So I'll continue with my proceedings currently while you're doing this.
Yes.
Okay?
If you could figure out some dry sunshine, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
And then.
Thanks so much, Jen.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, we have more. Further discussion and possible action on the proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar.
Last, last time we met, we discussed moving the vacation week to the second week to give us greater distance between February vacation and the spring recess. I continue to recommend that, and I believe that's what you have in your packet.
Any questions on the calendar?
Just that, the PLC day in May, is that a late PLC day? I know there's some, usually it's coinciding with the prom, so I'm just, is that?
I think Mrs. Canis said they look at it.
They may that.
And they don't have to, right, it doesn't have to be on the calendar right now? The correct one?
No, we don't have a date for next year.
Yeah. So we'll approve the calendar without, and then we can change later.
I think we, we do approve when we switch it from morning to afternoon, but right now, it's at the third week of May. It can move. Maybe they have prom plans, really, really well done. Any other questions? Mrs. McHannan?
Just as I'm looking at March as a, I, I support the move of the April week, I've just, March seems like a very long month. Was there any consideration of moving your PLC day on the 12th of February into a long weekend in March? I'm just.
Well, PLC is early, the more, just a late start.
The professional development day on the 12th, not the PLC day.
Professional development, I'm sorry, did I say PLC, professional development?
It's a PLC, the 12th is a PLC.
February 12th.
February 12th is a professional development day on the calendar, I see.
You were talking about March.
Correct, no, it, I'm sorry, I'll start again, I'm getting tired. On Friday, March, February 12th is a professional development day. That day was traditionally a vacation day based upon the mandated calendar from the state with the RASK. As we understand, we no longer have to follow that calendar, is there a reason why we are continuing to stay with that Friday as a professional development day, and would it be better to move it? While keeping it early in the year is important for our staff, to move it to make a long weekend in March? That's my thought.
Here's the real problem.
Okay.
February vacation probably has more children out with their parents on a vacation than and any other time of the year, except maybe, you know, around Christmas. So, on the 12th, usually on the Friday before February, attendance is so bad that no meaningful instruction can take place, and so it's a perfect day for PLC. You know, you get the teachers trained.
PD.
Yeah. We're all skinless for everybody.
Okay, I just, I mean, I think you're going to have them leave, they're, like, they're going to push the envelope anyway, I could totally see that, I just, to give more of a March break or sometime in there, it looked like a big, big month, but.
The only, the only part I might, that sometimes I hear back from parents when we have like a wonky day, is that for working parents, it's really hard. It's really hard, like attached to break, people can plan, but I agree, March's like the longest month, quite frankly, but I think what I hear from working parents is to throw a Friday in there, where all of a sudden they need to find coverage for their kids, it can be very difficult versus a planned vacation.
Maybe we're all snow days.
That, that's, that's the feedback sometimes I get when we have those days, but for your consideration, I would throw that out there.
Yeah, it just, it's just a long month, and we don't need to take that February, so we don't, why do we need that long a break in February? Six days.
Well, if I can take a guess, it's been a long tradition in the community, and that...
No, well, the, the Friday, I think, was a result of the calendar morphing a couple of years ago.
Well, I mean, the February, the February vac, break has been pretty much traditional everywhere.
The Friday specifically.
Oh, the Friday before.
Just the Friday. All right, I'll throw it out there.
So I guess, is there anyone else that feels strongly, or should we make a motion to approve this calendar?
I, I continue to, I have expressed concern over that February day for a couple of years, so I still don't like it. It might be the best answer academically, but I think we should look at that every year, it's a really long break.
Yeah. For children with services, who's a long time away from school, I...
Mrs. Klein, do you have any concern with children with services being out of school as the calendar is set?
Six days?
No. Okay.
And can I?
Can I, to approve?
Yeah. Motion to approve? Sure, can I have a second? Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? That is Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. McCannan, Mr. Burke, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Denine, Mr. Maroney, and myself. Any opposed?
I'll support it, I mean, it's moot.
Okay, so now it's unanimous. Okay.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good conversation, but I think at some point you have to rely on the professionals.
All right. No, I think they're, for the most part, they're, we're going off of how we've always done it, and should we really think of it, but, maybe for next year.
I think we've had enough of that conversation, that I still think we need to rely on the professionals, and I would argue that I think they've all thought that through any number of times in trying to develop and look at the calendar. I just don't know how many times we can have the conversation.
So the vote and the motion is, and that thing's passed, so the conversation is over, and we're going to move forward. We'll move on to action items, personnel items. Mrs. Stein?
I think we were passing around a revised PAR.
Sorry, stopped at me.
Because, sorry, so I included the retirees that we discussed in executive session, and also the new guidance counselor at the middle school because the budget was approved last night, so we can appoint her tonight.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the May 14th, 2019, I'm sorry, the personal action report dated May 14th, 2019? Mr. Burke, and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you very much. Is there any public comment this evening? Thank you, Mrs. McGee. With that, can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Burke and Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? That is unanimous, yeah, okay. We are adjourned.
I like the art teacher.
Just so you know, and I will put it in the memo, but...